Okay, good evening. This is the Board of Selectmen's meeting of July 11, 2021 at 6:30 PM. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, in addition to the 2020 COVID-19 outbreak emergency, the July 11, 2021 public meeting of the Board of Selectmen shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group conversation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/LakeCam. You do not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to review at a later date. www.lakem.tv. So, Board of Selectmen, Leah Fabian, are you present?
Present.
And Brian Day, are you present?
Present.
Okay, thank you. And when we get to the line items, we can introduce the people that are attending. Okay, first on the agenda is Selectmen's announcements. This is from the police chief. It's a pleasure to announce that Harold Marshall's successful graduation from the whistle police training committee is 69th Recruit Officers Course. Officer Marshall graduated on Thursday, December 30th, and will begin parole this weekend. Didn't waste any time. Officer Marshall was awarded the 100% award from the academy staff. This prestigious award is given to one officer who gave 100% and 100% of the time. I have confidence that Officer Marshall will continue his hard work and give 100% to the town of Lakeville and its citizens. Congratulations to him.
That's pretty nice, huh?
Very nice.
Very awesome.
That's a lot of hard work, by the way. Weeks of hard work, so you know. Okay, the next thing from the police chief, the police and fire chief would like to announce the completion of the six-site simulcast microwave radio network. The project began on March 6, 2019, and was completed on December 29, 2020, bringing a much-needed coverage and improvement communications to the town of Lakeville. This project includes improves public safety, improves the safety for the Lakeville police officers and the firefighters. I would like to thank the Board of Selectmen and the Police Station Building Committee and the citizens of Lakeville who supported this very important project. I'd like to also thank Lieutenant Ryan Maltese, who was instrumental in this project, and his dedication and leadership and expertise proved to be valuable to the town, which led to time and cost saving. Yeah, this was a huge project, and it was very well done and managed by Ryan, so I'd like to thank him for that as well. And this has significantly improved the communications with the police officers in the Fire Department and at the schools. So, anybody want to say anything about that? Are we all set?
I'll just say that that project started a while ago, and there were a few bumps in the road, but I'm happy to know that it's done. And I want to thank the chief and Lieutenant Maltese also. Lieutenant Maltese was instrumental in doing all aspects, including explaining it to everyone who, including myself, who it needed to be explained to. So, very appreciative of those efforts.
And I would thank Lieutenant Maltese as well. I mean, it was eye-opening getting to talk to them towards the end of the project when I came on board and hearing what they're fixing and why they're fixing it and how many gaps we had. So, it's awesome to know that those have been filled, and we've got great coverage now for both police and fire.
Thank you. The town of Lakeville is negotiating a new contract with Verizon. The Cable Television Advisory Committee would like to hear from the Lakeville residents through the use of a Refine Line survey. The link is under News on the town website homepage. Next is due to the COVID-19 restriction, the Fire Department remains closed to the public to apply for a burn permit for 2020. You must use the town's online permitting platform to apply for the permit. Please visit the Fire Department page on the town's website. The permit is $10, and online payment options will be provided. I hope people realize that we don't want people to have access, you know, to the town offices, especially the Fire Department, you know, right now with the new spike in the COVID-19 cases. So, please be patient. And just so you know, we have over 1,000 permits to renew, so it's no small task. So, thank you very much. The town's annual election is April 5, 2021. Nomination papers are available at the town clerk's office. Please call ahead at 508-946-8800, and the town clerk's office will help you get your nomination papers. For additional information on the process and the positions that are available, please visit the town clerk's page on the town websites. The other thing that is going on right now is the annual dog licenses, and once again, there's about 1,200 dog licenses that have to be renewed, removed, and a letter along with the application has been sent to every household that has a dog. And you could do it online, or better still, just fill out the application with your check and drop it in the town clerk's box outside the town hall, or you certainly can mail it as well. The Treasurer Collectors Office would like to remind residents of the real estate taxes that do February 1, 2021, as the town hall is closed to the public due to COVID-19. No person in payments will be allowed, and cashed is not accepted at this time. You have a few options, you have a few options to make. Your payments for real estate and motor vehicle tax payments by check or money or can be mailed, are dropped in the silver payment box located outside the town hall, or you can pay online through the town website for current excise tax or current past due, real estate taxes, and personal property taxes. Once again, there's almost 4,000 tax bills, you know, that have gone out, the volume of tax bills, and we will be soon sending out the excise tax bills, which is about 12,000 excise tax bills. So, you can see the volume of payments that they have to deal with. So, please, once again, do your best to follow the instructions, and we'll do the best we can to try to help you if we have to. Last thing is the brown bag program at the senior center. The eligible assistant seniors provides a free bag of groceries. The next dates are on January 27th and February 24th. This will be done by curbside pickup. Please call the senior center to enroll in this problem. I just, I don't know if, I'm sure the Selectmen, you know, have read the senior center newsletter. It's just amazing, some of the things that have been done to help the seniors out in the last six months. I mean, some of the meals and the programs and stuff like that, and it's a big task. And we like to say that, thank the COA director and her staff, they've done a really terrific job, so.
I'd like to add to that, Mr. Chair, if I may. You know, I usually know when some of the events are actually, you and I have been to a couple helping to, I think Brian's been to a couple too, helping to pass out meals, and the seniors that, you know, pull up in their vehicle, they couldn't be happier, you know, to have some interaction. Not only that, but they, you know, they bring baked goods for the three ladies that actually work at the COA, because they really are a big part of their life. So, and on occasion, I've been at Ted Williams Camp, and I'll see cars, and I'm like, Jesus, another event. So, they're really doing, they're really working hard over there to keep our seniors engaged. So, you know, big thank you to, you know, Kelly Howley and Lori Fahy and Cheryl for, you know, all their work over there. It means a lot. Thank you.
You all set, Brian? Okay. Just the last thing I'd like to mention, on Saturday night at 9 o'clock, I got a call at my house. It wasn't a complaint, but what it was, was from the Professional Police Association, and, you know, they've been calling around, you know, asking for donations and so forth. That is a scam, so everybody knows. Please do not, you know, send anything or any donations, you know, to this group. And the police chief, of course, I talked to the police chief, and of course, he's very upset about it because it hurts other people that are trying to do, you know, normal fundraising. And so, when you have an organization like this that's trying to raise money, and it's a scam, it's really a shame. But just reminder, especially to the seniors, not to take these calls. Okay. Next on the agenda is to meet with town council to review the host agreements for Twisted Growers. So, I guess we originally thought, Brian, that this meeting was, this discussion was going to be from with town council and the board, but I guess these strange people showed up, so.
That's correct, sir. So, after our last meeting, I know each individual Selectman had some personal changes and points that they wanted to send to town council. So, Amy was kind enough to put those together and then send us all of revision back. So, this would have been, the three of us, our first opportunity to discuss those proposed changes.
Okay. So, I guess what we could do is discuss those proposed changes, Brian, with Amy, and then if, the first one we're doing is Twisted Growers. So, if anybody has any questions about our discussion or whatever, please raise your hand and then state your name and your position, so we can recognize you and have that for the minutes. So, Brian or Amy or?
If you'd like to start with Twister Grows first, or I'll defer to Amy if you have a preference on cultivation or retail. I think there was a similar number of items in each one to discuss.
I don't have a preference, whatever you guys want. I'm gonna do cultivation first?
Sure.
Okay.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Amy Questle, Town Council. So, after the last meeting, you guys had continued the discussions to tonight, and in the interim, I had received some comments from individual members of the Board of Selectmen regarding some of the financial terms. So, I was just hoping that we could get some kind of consensus on the financial terms going forward on these HCAs. The rest of the HCAs are pretty standard and not really much to consider because it's such standard language. But in, one of the changes that one of the Selectmen wanted to see was a, the community impact fee would be 3%, but there would be a minimum of not less than $150,000. So, no matter what, for the first, so this is a five-year term. So, for the five years, the town would be, you know, somewhat guaranteed in getting $150,000. That would be the minimum of that 3%. If for some reason, which is, I think, in my opinion, highly unlikely, that $150 is over 3%, then the way that this is drafted is that the overage would be considered a donation from the company. So, that was the first, that was the first change with regard to this. The other, the other changes that I think are just clarifications at this point are that the $50,000 is a one-time payment, and that $50,000 will be attached to each host community agreement. So, therefore, there will be a $50,000 payment for the cultivation host community agreement, and there will be a $50,000 payment for the retail host community agreement. And then, the other change that I think was also agreed upon at the last meeting was that any product that goes out of the cultivation facility would be, it would be 3%. So, we're not going to consider when they bring in separate product, the markup, et cetera, et cetera. So, it would just be, it's a straight 3% impact fee. So, I'm not sure if you wanted to take them individually and, you know, start with the easiest ones. The, you know, the first one is the $50,000 is a one-time payment. So, just to make sure that, you know, the three of you are, you know, are on board with the fact that it's just a $50,000 one-time payment.
I believe the three of us were in agreement with the one-time last time around. I think the only point of discussion was whether or not it was one payment per legal company or one per HCA. I think that was the only thing.
Correct. So, yep. So, that would be the next, that would be the next issue for the board to discuss, whether it's per license, per HCA, or per company.
And if I could make a recommendation just to consider, I think whatever we decide here, we should probably just make policy going forward, so that if we enter an additional HCAs in a similar structure, we kind of have that, you know, already finalized, so make things a bit more streamlined.
Okay. You want to talk about the $150,000 minimum payment? Are we okay with that?
I thought we were taking these one at a time.
Yeah. But this has the same provision in it. But the cultivation has the same provision of a minimum of $150,000.
No, sorry. I mean, we were taking each individual element of the contract one at a time, so.
Okay. All right. So, you want, does somebody want to attend a motion that, for Twisted Growers, that the one-time payment be $50,000?
So, move.
Second, a motion. I see Mr. Silverman has a hand up, though.
Okay. I wanted, I wanted to let you know, my clients are fine with that. That was something new that was mentioned, wasn't mentioned at the last meeting. My clients are both fine with that, but I haven't seen the language. If there's a new version out there, I haven't seen the language. I do need to see that before we could agree to it, but the concept, they're fine with. I just wanted to let you know.
Mr. Silverman, would you mind if I just ask for clarity what they're fine with, just for the minutes?
On the cultivation, having a minimum 150,000, they're also fine for, you know, minimum 150 on the 3%. They're also fine with having a one-time $50,000 fee per HCA. That works for them as well. And they're also fine, I know you guys had, there was an issue on the, sort of, we were trying to only charge 3% on the carve-out, you know, or excuse me, 3% on the markup, and people expressed some concern. We don't need to put that in either. We're happy to just go with 3% on the full sales price. So, I think both clients on the cultivation side are happy with those changes that you're looking for.
Okay, we have one motion. Do you want to make it all one motion, Brian?
If Attorney Silverman's clients, both of them for the cultivation, perhaps that makes sense to do then? I would look to see if that makes Amy or Tracy's life any harder.
So, I'll withdraw my motion. Let's start there first.
Okay, so somebody want to make a motion then to recommend and approve the $50,000 one-time payment and the $150,000 minimum fee and the 3% on all, help me out, Amy, on all?
Wholesale.
All wholesale sales.
Sales, yep.
Sales.
I think the last thing might be, we also discussed last time that the charitable payments would go to the town, and we would disperse them.
That's correct, yep.
Okay. So, that's the motion. I'll make that motion.
Yeah, that, excuse me, that paragraph is gonna have to be changed. You're right.
Yes.
Amy, that'll have to be changed.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I have that one.
Okay.
And I would second the motion with the caveat that this is assuming Amy and Attorney Silverman work out the language appropriately, since he hasn't had an opportunity to see it yet.
That's fine. Okay, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Amy and I.
Yeah, I.
The camera, I. Okay, so the next agreement is for Twisted Growers, having to do with the retail operation. I do want to say one thing. I forgot, I should have said it upfront, that both these facilities had already been previously approved by the Board of Selectmen, and so these, the changes in the names are, we've changed the contracts, but some people say, oh, these two new sites, they're not two new sites. They're existing sites that were previously approved by the board.
So, they're essentially taking the place of two, of two other sites?
Correct.
Yep. And then, Mr. Chairman, on the, on the retail for Twisted Growers, there's also, I just didn't want to forget, there's the same, there are the same changes that we just, that we just decided on, which is that the $50,000, it's one time, and it's going to, it's going to be within the retail HCA also. But the retail HCA has a little bit of a difference. Again, the board is to consider, you know, a minimum payment of, you know, the $150,000. And then, to determine, again, if the $10,000 charitable donation applies to both the retail and the cultivation, which it was my understanding at the last meeting that it did apply to both, just as the $50,000 did apply to both. And then, we have the discussion with regard to the 3% and how we calculate the 3% when it comes from Twisted Growers. So, that's an overview of the retail host community agreement that we wanted to discuss, the elements that we wanted to discuss.
Okay. Brian?
I was just gonna ask Selectmen Fabian, I think that was an area where you had some questions last time. Were you able to get everything answered that you would hope to?
Yes, I had a conversation with Amy and got all my questions answered. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Okay, so, do you want to take these one at a time this time, instead of doing it all at once?
Well, I think that, I think that the $50,000 one-time payment is answered. The $50,000 per HCA is answered. So, now I would, I guess I would start next with the minimum payment. So, there was a suggestion of a minimum payment in the cultivation HCAs of $150,000. So, you know, I simply carried that over. I don't know what, what the board was thinking for a minimum payment for retail.
Well, since that was my idea, I think it ought to all be the same, 150 for each. And I don't think, I think, Phil, I feel you just, I think you said before, you don't have any problem with that, right?
Well, I said it on the cultivation. If I can give you my thoughts on where I come from on the retail side, it's a different animal. You know, again, I think, I'll leave, Boston Botanical, I'll leave aside, because this really only applies to Twisted Growers, but I can tell you that 150,000 minimum on the cultivation side is not, nobody has an issue saying that they can meet that, okay? Under most sets of scenarios in terms of their projections, they will sell more than $5 million of product on that side. And so, you can basically say that even if you have to pay $150,000, you'll never be in excess of the 3% that is the maximum under state law. It's much less easy to say that on the retail side. And there's several reasons, but basically, $5 million a year is no guarantee on the retail side. So, I would point out that there's substantial competition on the retail side. And not only is it from brick and mortar stores, which are now starting to pop up all over the place, but you also have this new delivery license, which basically allows these delivery companies to go out, and they can purchase product wholesale and sell it themselves and deliver it to people. And so, they're competing too. So, it's a very robust retail market. The other thing about it is this particular location, my client's very excited to run an operation here, but it is a challenging location. This is in an industrial park. It doesn't have drive-by traffic, and it would just be very difficult to guarantee $150,000. That would take an enormous, it could potentially take an enormous chunk out of their ability to have profits here. So, I was, I really wanted to urge the board, we're happy to pay 3% on the retail, but I think, I think if I was gonna suggest a minimum, I think $60,000 is a lot more palatable from the perspective of my client, and that's what I'm, I'm hoping you can take that into consideration.
Here, so Mr. Silverman, you're saying 2 million is a much more commendable run rate once they're operational?
I mean, it's a comfort level, again, and I'm, some of this, I think I told you, everybody here, but my firm represents a number of companies all around the country, and I know that, you know, in Colorado, what, which is a more mature market, and, you know, the competition ramped up, and, you know, is $5 million possible? It's possible, but $2 million, I hope will do better than that, too, but I'm not here to guarantee anything to anybody. It's just, you know, I would never, as their lawyer, advise them to get them in a situation where they're doing much more than guaranteeing you the maximum that state law allows. I'm comfortable at $2 million. I think it'll be higher, but that's really what I, what I would suggest makes sense here.
Well, the reason why I recommended that was because under the old agreement, it was based on $25 a pound, okay? So, $25 a pound, based upon the, the old agreement that Twisted Growers was negotiating was based on $25 a pound. And so, we felt, I felt, that there ought to be some kind of a guarantee, because the market, you know, right now, I mean, you guys know better than I do, but, you know, the per-pound market is roughly $3,000 a pound, I believe, somewhere in that area, maybe lower, I don't know, but that's the last time I had heard. So, when you're looking at that and looking at those numbers, and the cost for marijuana goes down, okay, as a percentage, then 3% versus the per-pound, you know, agreement before, that's how I based my calculation, you know, and said that this is what it should be. And those are based upon the numbers, you know, that roughly at 5,000 pounds. So, I don't know what this facility is going to be doing, but I think a conservative number is about 5,000 pounds, and that's how I came up with it.
If I remember, Chairman, the $25 a pound had something, had to do with your cultivation, didn't it? That wasn't on a retail.
No, I think it was both on retail. I'm sorry. It wasn't, right? That's correct, yeah.
So, all I can really, all I can do is sort of try to come up with anticipated sales, and I just, there's no way to guarantee 5 million in this climate. I'm very nervous about that, especially because since that time, they've done this new wholesale delivery license. That's my concern.
Okay.
And Phil, let's look at the overall number. When you talk about 5 million dollars, you're talking a hundred.
Excuse me, first of all, you need to introduce yourself for the record, please.
Dominic DiMartino, Principal of Twisted Growers. When you're talking about 5 million dollars, Rich, that's $100,000 a week. I mean, that's, that's a lot of sales in an industrial park that there's nobody going to that industrial park. That's me, it'll just be too rich for us.
Just so you know, Donna, all of our Just so you know, Donna, all of our, all of our marijuana facilities are industrial parks, you know, every one of them. So just, just so you know. So, okay, if we're gonna consider a different proposal, I'm okay with that. You know, that's fine with me. So if you're proposing a minimum of 60,000, whatever, we can consider that. Brian, did you want to say something?
I was just gonna ask, I know, I apologize, I don't have Twisted Growers projections in front of me, but I mean, is this a matter of trap, foot traffic? Or is it that it takes more than a year to get to where you expect to be on a retail side? You know, obviously, there's a lot of time, effort, money into the cultivation to then, you know, create your product. Is this a situation where, you know, 60,000 maybe is a good number in year one, but then by year two, once you're established, things should be better, or is it really just too grave an area?
Brian, I think that as the, as time goes on and supply and demand starts to catch each, catch each other, and perhaps the supply exceeds demand, that's where these fees are gonna be, they're gonna put companies like us out of business or force us to go into areas where it's a real retail location. So it's great that you guys are asking us to do this, and in some cases, you know, we're agreeing to it because we have to. But in the future, when supply and demand catch up, it's a recipe for failure for all of us, including the town. It never gets, it never gets better for this retail location. As more shops open up and it's easier to access the product, these type of fees and what you're asking for will put us, will ultimately put those locations out of business. Your 3% that you're looking for, when you take that 3% on the gross number, and you work that number against the net, fun fact, does anybody realize what the the percentage is on a net number?
Listening?
I mean, when you keep, when we talk about this 3% on a net side, you're probably between 10 and 12% on the net side. So it's just too much, you're asking for too much.
What, through you, Mr. Chair, what were the? If Amy, maybe you can remind me what the original host community agreement said?
So the original host community agreement was for cultivation. So the town.
For retail?
No, so the town did enter into, for Nature's Remedy, there was a retail host community agreement. And and that was, that was 3%. You know, so there was no minimum. But so a minimum amount has not, that's not something new. There's other, you know, other cities and towns have, have.
Minimums.
Have minimums. And, and, you know, I think that, you know, Ms. Fabian, I think it might go, it goes, this goes a little bit to your concern about, you know, rather than having a whole bunch of facilities, you, you would like to just, you would like to see facilities that will, that will work and will be successful, you know, for the, for the town. So, so I think that that's the basis for a minimum. And, you know, that, that we have companies that are coming in that are, that, you know, feel secure that, okay, yeah, we can definitely, you know, do this minimum. You know, the amount of the minimum, obviously, is a, is a negotiated term. But I think that's the purpose behind the minimum, you know, even though the chairman came up with the minimum, you know, you, you had expressed a similar concern with, you know, having a company that's gonna, that's gonna stay and be successful. So that's where that is. So the other one, so to answer your question, that was a really long.
No, that's okay.
But to answer your question, it's the retail, the one retail HCA that we have does not have a minimum.
But it's 3%, correct?
It is 3% correct. Yes.
So we're, we're happy to do the minimum. We share your desire to have a successful company in the town. I think that's sort of what our goal is, is to make sure that we're not overburdened in a way that harms our business. So I, we do want to, you know, we, we understood the request. And we, and especially, I think, from your perspective, just from a budgeting perspective, I can understand also why you'd want a minimum number. And that's why I proposed a number of 60,000, which I think is fair. And that's, that's sort of the thinking there. It's not really different from you. It's just a little, on the number is where we differ a little bit.
Well, again, Mr. Chair, I thought we ended up here because we were saying 3% on all the retail sales. And then it was suggested that that was like doing the 3% twice. But I, if we, if there's no estimate of what kind of retail numbers, then I think we have to just go with a straight 3% across the board on everything. So so that means 3% on the cultivation and then 3% on the, regardless of what the costs are, not the difference, just the entire 3%. I think that's how we ended up here, isn't it? Someone, anyone?
There were some other discussions last, two weeks ago, I think, where Amy referenced a few minutes ago on whether or not we would treat transfers from a company with a cultivation and retail at 3% or if we would not do as such.
Right.
That's a, that's the next issue, I think. I think we should bring out all the issues before we further the conversations, so we don't decide on one and then have to come back to that, the other one.
You mean, if I could give a quick opinion here, I would, I would certainly entertain a lower value and kind of, you know, mention that since our last meeting, it sounds like Twister Growers is much more open to the 50,000 in both agreements. So essentially, even though it's a one-time fee, that sort of represents an increased value we weren't seeing before. So I believe they have shown a willingness to work with us, and perhaps a slightly lower number for retail would be appropriate.
Okay, what do we want to go next?
So, so the next, so the next issue is the 3%. So what we have is we have a cultivation facility with a separate host community agreement, because they are in separate locations, but we, and, and we have a retail facility in a separate location. But we have one company. So, you know, the, the question that, you know, so if we did 3% on cultivation and 3% on retail, no matter who, no matter who the cultivation company sells to or where they're located, it's 3%. And then retail, it's 3% of who you sell to, and that's it. There is, you know, there's an argument on the other side saying that that means that the town is now getting 6% instead of 3%. The counterargument is you have this, you have one company that has a cultivation facility in Lakeville and has a retail facility right over the town line in another town. They're paying 3% to that other town, and they're paying 3% to Lakeville, you know, in the cultivation, on the cultivation side. And so, you know, there's, you know, obviously, this is a new area. There's, you know, there's no, there's no cases or precedent that I can cite to. But, you know, in my opinion, I think that, that the town could implement a 3% on the cultivation and a 3% on the retail, even though they're in the same town. The, the other alternative to that is that, you know, the concern would be, is it a whole, is it an arms-length wholesale transaction when Twisted Growers so-called sells to Twisted Growers? You know, on the cultivation, are we gonna get 3% on that cultivation? And so the, you know, there's a, to, to forego that, you know, we had come up with a formula that ensures that the town gets something. Or the option would be that the town gets 3% of the sales, whether they be arms-length transactions or not. Unfortunately, I can't guarantee how Twisted Growers would, you know, how they would do their internal paperwork regarding, you know, regarding selling to themselves. I don't know how that would be done. So, so the, so the, the option here is to have 3% on cultivation, no matter where the product goes, and 3% on retail. Or 3% on retail would remain. Or we would have a, this, this so-called formula where where what it comes down to is that if they sell, if they sell to themselves, it would be 50% of the, of the average, I think it's the average wholesale value that they have, that they have charged throughout the year.
No, it's 50% of the retail.
The retail, I'm sorry, the retail value that they charge throughout the year would be the cost of them selling to themselves.
The the primary reason why this is being brought up is that we had a cultivation, we have a cultivation facility that's up and running in town. And they were supposed to have a retail within the cultivation facility. They decided to sell off the retail part of it to another company. And the problem is that that cultivation facility now can, within the town of Lakeville, no charge, no credit for the town fees. And so we lost the revenue associated, you know, with that cultivation facility. And that's where we're coming from. That's where I'm coming from. I can't speak for the rest of the board. So we are concerned that, you know, we've got multiple changes in names already with companies. And we want to make sure the town is protected, and we are not protected under that agreement that was signed, you know, by the previous board. So any, anything that is sold wholesale to any retail outlet in the town, we get nothing. And that ain't right. So we need to come up with a solution for that.
Yeah, we don't, we, we would propose, this is sort of a, if we produce an ounce of marijuana and we sell it at our own retail, you are going to get 3% of the retail sales price under the retail HCA. The question is, what should you get under the cultivation HCA?
That's correct, yep.
So there's one argument that says you've already gotten your 3% on that, on that ounce. And so you shouldn't be able to go higher than that. But I can see it from your perspective too, that you should get something. And what I'm suggesting you should get is 3% on the wholesale price. Because that's what really is going on here. We're growing it, we're sort of wholesaling it to our retail place and selling it. So if we could come up with a wholesale price to charge the 3% against, that's how we get you what you're entitled to, I think. The question is, is what is that wholesale price? Now, we could put in language that just says, we look at the average wholesale price over the course of year and give you that, but I'm not sure it's gonna be, you know, what we decide to wholesale for doesn't necessarily mean that's our true average wholesale price. So what I wanted to do, what I suggested was, let's come up with a formula to just estimate what the wholesale price is. And my formula was, just take 50% of the retail price and say, that's the wholesale price, and we'll pay 3% against that. And that gets you paid for the wholesaling. That was, that's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, Brian?
I was just gonna ask Attorney Silverman, he might have just answered it, but I'll ask it just so I feel better. I mean, I don't know if it's a market seeker or not, but I mean, what is a general increase on a retail product these days? I mean, is it 40% over wholesale, is it 20%? Does it depend on demand? I mean, I don't, I'm just.
Yeah, that's the problem is, is it's, if I knew the answer to your first question, I still, it still might not be the answer. I'm, again, I'm suggesting to you that my number is a good compromise, because, again, and again, you know, your counsel may have a somewhat different view of this. I'm not sure there should be any charge against this, because I still think it's double dipping on the same ounce of marijuana that you're, I still think you're only allowed to get 3% of the gross sales. There is no additional sale here, really, okay? There's only one sale. Let's, you sell that ounce, and let's just say it's $500. You're, that's the only sale there is. It's an internal transaction, an internal transfer. So I'm not sure you should get more than 3%. But again, I want to accommodate your concern, and I want to pay you something for this sort of hypothetical transfer. And I'm proposing, I'll base the 3% on 50% of the retail sales price. I wish, Mr. Day, that I could tell you, you know, here's what the markup is, here's what it'll be. But I don't have the information now, and I suspect everybody does it a little differently. And I suspect that's gonna change a lot over time as supply ramps up. But Brian, just so I can, I can queue in here, I mean, right now, approximately, we're talking about 30% markup. So I don't want anybody to think that it's 100, 200, 400% markup. It's 30%. That's, that's what we're dealing with, if that helps.
It does. I appreciate the honesty.
And then if you take that 30%, though, Brian, and you look at the 3%, and you bring that to just your net number, because you're not taking into consideration rent, electricity, labor, et cetera, et cetera, that 3% in actual, when you look at a net number, you're probably somewheres at 10, 12%. And if you take that 10, 12%, and there's only 30% to be had, the town's actually a third partner with me. It doesn't make, again, doesn't make a lot of sense. We're all trying to work this out and for the long term. But some of the things that you guys are suggesting, it doesn't look like the long term will be as long as we're all thinking.
Yeah, just. So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, the, you know, I think that I just wanted, I just want to make it clear that the reasoning behind why I do not think that it's double dipping is because you have two facilities in your town. So rather than having the cultivation facility in Lakeville and the retail facility somewhere else, you actually have both facilities in your town. So this is called a community impact fee. So, you know, having another facility in your town is, is, is an impact. It's a, it's a greater impact. And, and so that's the, you know, that's the reasoning behind my approach, that this is not double dipping. I just want to make it clear that, that I don't think it is.
And I don't want to imply that it's a, that that's an illegitimate argument. I, as, as, you know, Ms. Castle has said, that this hasn't been adjudicated anywhere. I'm just trying to come up with a solution that I, that I hope works and is simple enough to implement and figure out the numbers. Oh, and by the way, for what it's worth, this is not the first time that I've used this number. I think, in fact, KP Law has done other HCAs with me with other towns with a similar circumstance, and it's exactly the formula we've used. I didn't come up with this new, this has been used before.
And the question would be, since we've already had three name changes with different companies, what happens if he decides to sell the retail? Twisted Growers.
So if he decides to sell the retail, then if you want, so in other words, then he's gonna be selling wholesale. He'll only be a cultivator. And I think he's selling 3% no matter where he sells it.
Right, but the new company that comes in and buys his, his retail will be obligated, will could be obligated to pay the town 3%, correct?
On the retail?
Yes.
They're gonna have to get their own HCA with you. And you would tell them, we want 3% of all your retail.
Right, but that's, you know, that's kind of where I'm coming from, is the Cannabis Commission says, for whatever rules they've put in place, if you have two, the way it's set up currently, they, that there needs to be two host community agreements.
Correct.
So I'm about consistency and, you know, I want to be careful what kind of precedents we set. So I don't want, you know, the next retail facility to come to me and say, well, you gave another retail facility, So I don't want, you know, the next retail facility to come to me and say, well, you gave another retail facility. And then we say, well, you know, because they have a cultivation too, and then a retail facility could say, so now we're being penalized by paying the entire 3% just because we're not a cultivator. So I am on the side of, you know, 3% on one cult, on the cultivation and 3%, a straight 3% on the other. I know that's not the popular decision, you know.
But they're not being penalized when they come in. They're just a retailer. They're paying the same 3% that this group is paying.
But you're asking us to use a different formula?
Well, but harkening back to their cultivation, that would go against their cultivation HCA.
Right.
So you're not hurt by the next retailer that comes along.
And the provision is only between transfers of Twister Growers itself. So if a new, if a new retail comes in, it, it, different power. Yeah.
Right, and we, we have, um, we have made sure that the, um, the Twisted Growers cultivation HCA is referenced, uh, references the retail HCA and, and vice versa. So, um, I, I would take, I would take the position that if, um, the retail or, or cultivation of Twisted Growers was sold to somebody else, that connection would be broken. And therefore, um, they would both be subject to 3% or whatever percent this board negotiates with the new owner of either cultivation or retail. But it would, they would be separate. Um, and I think that that's the difference than, that what we had in the past where we had, um, one HCA for, uh, cultivation, product manufacturing and retail.
Right.
All in, all under one HCA, where here we have, uh, two separate ones because we have, you know, two separate locations.
Okay, so we have, um, so what else did we need to talk about, Amy?
So the other, the only other, um, financial, um, provisions in the retail is that, um, again, the 10, um, the $10,000 charitable donation, um, which I'm assuming is you're going to want to come to the town. Um, and for the town to make a decision as to where it goes. And then, um, the charitable, um, the retail facility has a, um, I thought it was a, a $5,000, um, contribution, for the, just for, um, just for the negotiation, um, you know, of all of this. And then the payment of all of the, um, you know, the peer review consultants, et cetera, with regard to citing a retail facility in the town. Just, I just wanted to make the board aware of those payments, but it, the, the charitable donation that's been established. So it's really just two things, the minimum, minimum amount, I guess, would be the, since they're willing to do a minimum, I guess it would just be the amount that needs to be voted on. And then voted on whether we do a, um, 3% of all wholesale sales, including, and then 3% of retail sales. And then somehow having to, I'll, I have to come up with some language as to how to word it. So the sales, so the transfer from product from cultivation to retail is somehow captured in that, to get the 3%.
Or the 3% of Phil's recommendation of the wholesale price.
Or the retail, we could do 3% of the, um, of the markup. Yeah. Yep.
Uh, Brian, you wanna say anything or?
I mean, I can go a couple of different ways. Um, I mean, I kind of think, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think we would be like the second town in the state that has two of the same, two facilities from the same company, perhaps, one cultivation, one retail.
You mean the state or in the town of Lakeville?
In the same town, in the same town.
In different, in different locations.
Different physical locations, correct. Thank you.
Those are, these are the only, there's only two towns that I know of. Um, I don't, Phil might know of more. I don't.
Don't.
No, so it's just, yeah.
So we're kind of unique here. I mean, I kind of agree with, um, Amy's interpretation and Leah's in that, you know, if, if, if you weren't able to charge in both the cult, the 3% on the cultivation and the retail side, you almost would probably see the triple C saying, okay, well, if it crosses a boundary of one town to the other, well, then only each side can have one and a half percent or something to add up to three. Um, that doesn't seem to be the case. So to me, it seems like 3% on both sides is agreeable, at least for now, unless changes in the future come. I mean, I would also entertain perhaps, you know, we do the 3% on each, but it's the lower minimum. And then, you know, go from there. Or perhaps, you know, we, we go with Mr. Silverman's recommendation and increase the minimum. Some flavor, if there's something that's palatable there.
Okay, um, so I, I believe the only, well, it's two decisions to be maybe, maybe three. We agree that we're going to lower the minimum. We just have to decide what that minimum is going to be. So.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so, um, we have, uh, Phil recommending $60,000. A member of the board want to make the motion to, um, accept his minimum proposal?
Leah, you okay with that number?
Um, yeah, I guess I'm okay with that number.
Are we doing this in concert with?
Right, that's.
How we calculate the other value or not. So of course.
So as long as we're agreeing that we're going to talk about the, the $60,000, which I believe is acceptable. Phil, right?
That, yeah, that's.
All right, so the other, the other, the other two issues, um, we agreed that they're going to be charging the one, the one, the one-time $50,000 fee for both locations.
Correct.
Okay, then the, the other issue has to do with, um, the wholesale part to be sold to the retail. Uh, Phil, and I think, uh, Amy has seen this before, that, uh, it would be, help me out, I'm not sure what it is.
Um, the language is the markup between, um, purchase price and sales price, provided the company provides the town with documentary and, um, evidence of the purchase price.
Uh, you say you're okay with that, Phil, or?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay, Brian?
Repeat that once more. I feel like we just changed.
I'll do, I'm gonna do the whole, I'm gonna do the whole formula. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that'd be great. Cause I felt like that was only speaking to the markup and not.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It makes more sense. Sorry, I, I, I didn't turn the page. Um, so, okay, so in the event that the marijuana product produced at the, at the cultivation, and then is otherwise transferred by the company for sale at the retail establishment, it says that, um, so it's not subject to an arms-length transaction, the value of such product for purposes of calculating the community impact fee shall be based upon 50% of the fair market retail value of the product produced by the establishment or, um, the highest wholesale price charged by the company in an arms-length transaction during the preceding 12 months, whichever is less. So I don't know why, and, and, I mean, I think it's this, it's within this board's purview to say whichever is more.
And does that, excuse me for oversimplifying that long eloquent paragraph, but does that essentially turn into one and a half percent on the wholesale if it's staying within the company? If you're doing it based on 50% of the wholesale value?
Um, so it, yes, except that it's one and a half percent of the highest wholesale. So, um, so it's the highest price they've charged over 12 months.
Well, it's the lesser of the two.
But we, but I just said that they could possibly say higher of the two.
I, I.
And I do apologize to you, Mr. DiMartino's got the hand icon up. I don't know if that was on purpose or not.
He's in the dark.
I didn't want to be. I'm sitting in the dark because I'm afraid of you guys. You keep, every time I say, say, yes, for more, more money. Um, first of all, I apologize. I was trying to get back to my office and I, I couldn't make it, so I pulled over on a rusty area off the Merritt Parkway and it was very low lit, so I'm in the car with my lights on. But anyways, um, my question was, I wanted a little clarification from Richard. He said that Nature's Remedy sold off their dispensary to another.
Their retail, their retail.
The retail. So now that retail doesn't pay any HCA agreement to you or?
Not, not for that retail, no. We, we get the 3%, but then we don't get any of this wholesale piece. And their agreement says, we didn't negotiate this agreement.
I gotcha.
Their, their agreement says that, uh, anybody that has a facility in the town of Lakeville does not have to pay a fee. The, uh, well, it was a per pound fee, does not have to pay the 3% cultivation fee to the town.
So whatever the, whatever, uh, whatever Nature's Remedy sells to this, this outlet, Nature's Remedy as a wholesaler doesn't pay a 3%, only the dispensary pays the 3% to the town.
Correct.
Correct, because it's within Lakeville.
But they're two different companies now. They're two different companies.
Right.
No, I, I think we fixed that. But I, huh? The reason my, the reason my hand was up was because I wanted to point out a couple of things. One, and I said at the last meeting, Nature's Remedy decided to sell off their location because where it's located, it's a difficult retail site. That's number one. Number two, when you get off of Exit Six off of 495 and you're heading to my facility, I believe it's Middleborough, you drive through and there's a, a pretty good sized facility, maybe 200 yards down the road or before our industrial park that's selling, I believe it's medical marijuana, but I'm thinking that they're.
Medical marijuana.
But I, I've heard some, some scuttle that they may be changing that to medical and recreational. And again, that's in Middleborough.
I have no idea.
Not in Lakeville. But what I get, what I'm getting at is if you come off 495, whichever way you're traveling, you have to go by them before you get to Twisted Growers. So, you know, a lot, a lot of customers could swing in there versus come into our place. And to make matters worse, after hearing you guys tonight, one of our competitors isn't paying a host community agreement, so they're ahead of us. You know, it almost makes it difficult for us to, to be in this market because.
Shame on that community if they don't have a good agreement, so.
Yeah, no, no, all of the, all of the licensees in Lakeville have a host community agreement and they all pay something. So the, the issue is that.
The Nature's Remedy, Nature's Remedy doesn't pay.
The issue is that there's a provision that a cultivator does not have to, um, does not, we don't get 3% of what they transfer within the town of Lakeville. So that's, that's the issue. So everyone, I, I just want to make it clear, everyone, every HCA, they, they are required to pay something. So, so you're not being treated any, with any disparate treatment at all with regard to this.
So with, in regards to what Richard said, with Nature's Remedy, both sides are paying the 3% that you're requesting of us? Cause that's not what Richard just said. He said one of them isn't paying.
That's correct. Nature's Remedy's cultivation is not paying the town a dime to sell that wholesale type of stuff to the retail place in Lakeville.
Yeah.
Amy, are you aware that then one of them, one of the, either the cultivation or the dispensary is not paying the 3%? Because you just said that they're both paying.
They are paying 3%, except they're paying, they're not paying 3% to the facility. They're not paying 3% of what they transfer to a facility in Lakeville. So if they transfer product to Marshfield, they are paying 3%. So I just wanted to make it clear that the town is receiving money from each licensee.
I, I understand.
And so the town, the Board of Selectmen have the, have the discretion, in my opinion, you have the ultimate discretion to make the, to determine how you want this, um, how you want the community impact fee, um, to come in and how much of it you want, up to 3%. Um, and where you want it to go.
I understand.
And that is within the statute.
Amy, I understand what you're saying. It's just, but it, they're paying the 3% from any, any other area they're shipping their products to, but the dispensary that sits in front of their facility, the town doesn't benefit from that. And I'm okay with that. I'm just pointing out.
We're not okay with it.
No, and I, and I think that's the point is. Richard, I get it. And, and you're sharpening your knives now with a company like myself to make sure.
I'm sorry, none, none of these board members that are sitting here negotiated those agreements two or three years ago.
We understand.
You know, I'm sorry, you know.
Again, it's fine. It, we understand. What, what we're trying to do is just come up with that number. We.
Okay.
It's on this type of a, on this type of a transaction. Again, we understand the other one is different. We're going to pay you something in this type of a transaction. I, I'm just trying to make this easy and come up. We're trying to get it. And not, I'm, I'm trying to make it, again, I'm proposing 3, 3% based on 50% of the ultimate retail sales price. The suggestion has been, you know, you compare that to the highest wholesale price that we sell elsewhere, that that's the other possibility. That, that almost discourages us from trying to seek more revenue on wholesale, which is to your benefit, by the way. So I'm not, I'm not, there's a balance here and it would just be much easier from my perspective if, if the simple formula was, uh, 3% against 50% of the, uh, of, of the retail.
Okay, is there anything else, Amy? Is that it now? Are those are all our things, right? All set? Okay, so does one of the board members want to make a motion to, uh, we have the minimum that's been proposed at $60,000? Um, do we have to, uh, vote on the $50,000 one-time payment? Amy, you want us to do that too?
Oh, you're muted, Amy.
You're on mute.
Still muted.
You're still muted, Amy.
Sorry.
That's okay.
All the time. Um, I, I think that that has been, um, that's already been, um, determined. So it's just the two differences that the retail has, which is the, the minimum and then the, um, calculation of the 3%.
Does, Brian, you want to make a motion?
Well, uh, I would make a motion. I was going to suggest if we go with, uh, Mr. Silverman's recommendation of 60,000, um, I would entertain perhaps a slight change to his, uh, calculation and use 75% instead of 50, uh, based on the earlier statement that 30% markup might be around, you know, what you'd expect. Um, that would still represent a discount, um, for, we'll call them intra-town transfers, then 3% on both sides of it.
Is that your motion?
I can make it one.
We'll move along here. And then, uh, we can have this go, once the motion is made, seconded, Phil can have any comments or whatever, and then we can decide what we want to do.
Then I will make a motion to amend the document as presented to be a $60,000 minimum community impact fee payment, uh, lowered from the original 150,000. And for the, uh, transfer of product between the cultivation and retail operations of Twister Growers, uh, we use a formula based on 75%.
It would be, um, 75%.
Yep, 75%, and I would suggest leaving it at the lesser of the two instead of changing it to the higher. But 75 instead of 50.
Okay, uh, do I have a second? No.
I'm not muted and I'm not seconding.
Okay, I'll step down and second the motion. Um, any discussion?
I just need to ask Mr. DiMartino if that works for him.
Yes, that works for me, Phil. Thank you.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Your chair, can I, um, just repeat the motion so that I get it right?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Minimum of $60,000 community impact fee payment. And for the transfer of product between the cultivation and retail operation, it would be 75% of the wholesale price?
No, so it would be, um, it would be 75%. And I, I can get this to you, Tracy. It would be 75% of the fair market retail produced by the establishment or the highest or 75% or, or the high, 75% of the highest wholesale price charged by the company in an arms-length transaction during the preceding 12 months.
It wasn't the highest.
I said the lowest.
The lower, not the highest. You guys keep trying to get more money. It's, you're making, and you know, it's like you just want to keep saying, yes, yes, yes. But at the end of the day, it's, it's not beneficial for anybody to keep doing this. Really, you guys are pushing, you're getting all you can get out of it.
That's our job.
Work with us because we want to be a business. No, I get it, but it's our job to try to make, make these businesses work and continue moving forward. And that's not good.
I don't, I don't represent you. I represent the people of Lakeville, so, you know.
No, no, I don't, no, I get it, but, but I, I hear everybody on these lines and they just keep saying, yes, 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 yes. And at some point, we're all going to be saying.
So we got the right motion there, Tracy. We're all set, right?
No, because Amy broke up while she was reading it. So she can just repeat after the 75%. No, because Amy broke up while she was reading it. So, she can just repeat after the 75%.
Uh-oh.
Sorry, Tracy. Sorry, I got knocked off.
Uh-huh, yeah. Could you just, you were breaking up, so can you repeat after 75%?
After 75, it's, um, 75% of the fair market retail value of the product produced by the establishment or 75% of the highest wholesale price charged by the company.
Lowest, lowest, not highest.
Let me get back to the language. I said lower. Let me get back to it.
Brian did say lowest.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, whichever is less. Oh, I got tripped up on the whether whichever is less than.
Yeah, because it's higher, it's highest, but it's whatever's less.
Yes, so that, that's what I meant, whichever, the whichever is less part is what-
So, it's the highest wholesale price charged by the company in an arms-length transaction during the preceding 12 months, comma, whichever is less.
Right. Yeah, so no charging $5 for wholesale, then that's the, the least. Thank you for catching that.
Amy, can you just send me that language tomorrow? That would be great.
Definitely.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Uh, the camera, aye? Uh, Leah, you abstaining or voting no?
I'm opposed, nay.
Okay, um, we're all set, so I guess now the next thing that needs to be done is that, uh, Amy and Phil, they need to, um, finalize the, uh, language and review it, and then we'll approve it.
So, I, yeah, so the next thing, you guys will look, will see final language.
Okay.
Before you sign it.
Yes, please.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, so we're all set. Go ahead. Do you have something, Brian?
Oh, I was just going to thank everybody for their patience.
Okay.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, board. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Okay, next on the agenda is to, uh, meet with, uh, Town Council, review and vote on the host agreement for Boston Botanical. Um, okay, so.
So, um, so Mr. Chairman, just to make this go, um, faster, um, that is, this has all been agreed upon. So, uh, this is a 51 time, $50,000 one-time payment. Um, there is a $150,000 minimum per year on the 3% and there is a $10,000 annual charitable donation, which will be, uh, directed to the town for the town to, um, choose the source of, of the receipt.
Um, before I forget, Amy, um, the next time we vote on this agreement, um, we need to make sure that we do the, uh, transfer, uh, from-
Yes.
We need to do that too.
Correct.
Okay, so, um, I'll entertain a motion to, um, um, to approve, um, Boston Mechanical's, uh, changes as stated by, uh, Town Council?
So, moved.
Second the motion?
Any discussion? No discussion? That's amazing.
Boston Botanical let all you folks off the hook earlier.
All right, all those in favor?
Baby and I.
Aye, aye.
The camera, aye? Okay, so I guess the next step is to get the agreement to Phil, and then we'll have to get that, whatever language we need to do that transfer.
Yes.
Um, okay?
Yep.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I love tours before you guys have to officially close your doors, so keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Anybody need to get up and stretch?
Do whatever you need. Does anybody need a bathroom break? All right, Amy, we'll appreciate it.
You're all done with me, right? Okay. I'll see you soon, I know. I'll see you on Thursday or something.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, uh, next on the agenda is, uh, to discuss the number of finalists to, uh, interview for the Town Administrator's search. And, uh, Brian actually found a policy that was approved in, uh, February of 2014 establishing the search committee. Um, uh, we did all of that as far as, uh, forming the search committee and so forth and so on and all the other stuff associated with this, including the list of questions and all that. We reviewed the salary and the benefits and, uh, et cetera. So, the one open item, um, is that, um, the policy says the Board of Selectmen will forward to, uh, to the search committee, which will include the number of finalists, a minimum of two finalists, that the, uh, selectmen will want to interview. So.
So, may I?
Yes, you may.
You may as our member of the search committee.
Yeah. At the, uh, the search committee meeting we had last week, which I thought went very well, um, it was, um, every, uh, just about everybody, well, no, everyone felt the same way that, um, we all know how these things work sometimes, where we could say five candidates and then, um, in between booking the, from the time we make that decision until the time the interviews are booked, you may have people that drop off and everyone on the committee seemed to feel as though they don't want to just interview, let's say, two people if that's all that's left, or, you know, three. So, um, everyone suggested if we could do something like an alternate. I don't see anything in here that would forbid us from doing, let's say, five and two alternates. Um, so that way we would try to interview a minimum of four or five people. So, um, it was kind of the sense of the board that no one really wanted to interview just like two candidates. Um, so, I, I don't know, uh, my suggestion from, you know, what we talked about on the search committee was to bring forward five finalists and two alternates in case we drop, a couple of people drop out, for whatever reason. I know last time we had five, one person dropped out before we even booked the interviews and another person dropped out because they were offered a position somewhere else. So, um, so that's what I'm suggesting, but I'm, I'd love to hear what my boardmates have to say.
Leah, has MRI given an indication of how many they're going to give the initial committee? Are they talking 15, 20?
They're talking about 15, 12 to 15. 12 to 15, and then, um, there will be some semi-finalist, so to speak, interviews done um, in executive session, because at that point, the, um, the applicants still have, you know, some assurity of confidentiality. Only when they're interviewing for the final position does it become, you know, public record. So, they're, they're thinking about, um, bringing forward like 12 to 15 and also just to the search committee and executive session, bringing forward maybe an additional five or six names, um, just to make sure the search committee sees what's, what's out there. Um, and then the final, everyone was comfortable with five as a final number as an interview. Um, if we drop one, most people were comfortable with interviewing four, but what happens again if you drop, you know, more than one, then we're, you know, we have the two or three. And I do expect that the candidates, from what they say they're already getting, I do expect that, uh, the top 10 will be very competitive. So, I think even if we do, you know, five and two alternates, I don't, I don't think we're like not picking the cream of the crop. I think, um, you know, they're all get, already getting in some, some, some applications and resumes with folks who have experience, so, um, you know, of course, they're gonna, you know, completely take off the table, folks who may not understand exactly what the job is, so they've been a manager somewhere, they don't understand, you know, so they're gonna do, they're gonna eliminate all those for us and, and, um, uh, we'll go from there, but, I mean, I personally would like to interview a minimum of four. But that's me and, you know, the search committee folks all felt as though that was, you know, four to five would be a good number to interview for the final interview with selectmen.
Brian?
Um, seven sounds like a lot.
Well, it would only be seven if we lose, you know.
So, so would you, you would bring to us, because by that time you've seen everybody, um, they've been new to Rich and I. So, would you be bringing, um, are they going to be in any kind of order, or is it just here's five, or are they going to be kind of ranked in?
It's gonna go according to, yeah, it's gonna go according to who can make what time on the day of the interviews.
No, but Brian's point is, uh, we go, you're going, is the search committee gonna go through the, the resumes and say that this is candidate number one, this is candidate number two, three, four, five?
Um, I, I don't know if we're gonna rank them one, two, three, four, five, or if we're just gonna rank them top five, let's say. I, and, or, you know, each search committee member may rank them, and MRI, you know, may do the tallies for us, but no one really talked about one, ranking one, two, three, four, five.
I would assume, I would assume the search committee, let's say they get 15, 20 resumes, okay? They're gonna go through those resumes and they're gonna say, this one, one, this one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, whatever.
Yep.
Okay, and those are the ones that we want to interview.
Yep. They do have a rating system that they use, but, uh-
That's what I was talking about, I think.
Yeah, but it's kind of, you know, because we're asking everyone to write and, you know, to answer three essay questions. I mean, sometimes that can be quite subjective, how we all interpret, you know, someone's essay. So, um, we, we are gonna be asked to do some rankings, so I don't see why, you know, we wouldn't know that, but, um-
Yeah, I would, I don't know. I feel like it starts to get harder when you've got more people. I mean, I would be, and again, whatever you guys think, but, I mean, bring us your top three and keep two in your pocket and if we lose one to another town or somebody drops out, we've, we've still got a couple to look at.
The problem is, Brian, that, uh, in these, this particular scenario is that, you know, there's a lot of jobs out there right now, okay, for this position, going on right as we speak. And, you know, a lot of times what happens is, is that, you know, you look, somebody looks at a resume and, you know, he looks on paper, gee, that person looks great, you know? And then, well, you know, you know the routine, and then all of a sudden you interview that person, you say, oh my God, you know, this isn't the right person, you know, for us. I just don't wanna, I don't want to see us limit ourselves to say it's three. Then we get the three and the, the three board members, you know, look at this and we say, you know, I'm not sure this is the right person, number one. Number two, um, I happen to know who this person, you know, is and, you know, knows about the background and so forth, so that's the only thing that concerns me. I have no problem of saying, you know, we're gonna interview three, but I want to make sure we have a fallback for another two in case we have to. That's all I'm concerned about.
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally on with that. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm confident the people that we put on the search committee that they're gonna weed out the chaff and, you know, those that fall on the, the cutting room floor, so to say. We don't, they don't need to interview at all. Um, and then, you know, three plus a couple extra, you know, candidates, just in case, is fine with me. I just, I don't know if we want to do another whole interview loop on five candidates, I guess, at the selectmen's level.
No, I mean, I would suggest a minimum of four, so however that, whatever it takes us to get there. Um, but I, I'll just give you an example during the last set of interviews. Um, one of the parts that I actually, um, I got a lot out of was, you know, the candidates were asked certain questions about Lakeville and it was really interesting to see how the candidates all, um, you know, used really current facts, current events of what's going on in Lakeville and what they'd like to do or how they'd like to see, you know, um, some, some referred to, let's say, the affordable housing and I would have loved to have, just for comparison, had heard a fourth, you know, person, um, make a, you know, make, that, that was one thing that I found to be very helpful, how they, from the outside in, how some of their interpretations of what was going on in town were really pretty accurate, you know? So, I, I, I felt like I would have liked to have interviewed at least one more person, but, you know, again, it's, it's-
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Who wants to make the motion? You want to make the motion, Leah? It's fine, or Brian, whatever.
Well, we know what I do.
That's, that's fine. I don't mind doing a few more interviews. I've done, you know, many, many, many. What's a couple more?
I just want to know, like, what a bare bones minimum is that you want to interview? So, you know, uh, for me, a bare bones minimum is four.
Okay, we can do four.
You know.
I, I just don't want to say like, oh, four and then five alternates, because if we're going that far down the list, if they didn't make it to the cut, then why are we interviewing anyways?
Right. No, I, I totally agree with you on that. I mean, um, I, I would say five. I'd like to see five come forward with four as a minimum. You, you know, we could do that, so that, that's kind of where I'm, you know, do you want to interview five people, which means we need a couple alternates? Or do you want a minimum of three, which means we can, you know? So, I, I'd like to interview four people, so whatever gets us to that number, if someone drops out. So.
Okay, who wants to make a motion? Brian?
Uh, I'll make a motion that the, uh, search committee for the Town Administrator role sends forth, uh, no less than four finalists to the Board of Selectmen for interview. Uh, should one drop out, they are welcome to replace that person.
Okay, I'll second that motion, uh, Leah?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Baby and I, sorry.
Thank you.
Aye, aye.
Try to do this in order, try to make it easy for Tracy.
I know, I was just-
The camera, the camera, aye. Okay, good. Okay, moving on to the, um, number six is to discuss the closing of Something Bruin and options to lease and renovations, uh, required.
And if I may, sorry for digging up a seven-year-old policy to make us go through that, but-
Well, no, but, you know, I'm glad you did, because I just want to make sure everything is, you know, done properly.
It just, Brian, it just goes to show that, uh, at some time, some point when we get time, we gotta review these policies.
Yeah.
We don't have time.
There's a few written in quill.
Yeah, right. Anyways, um, okay, um, discuss the closing of Something Bruin, the options to lease and renovations required. As the board knows that the, um, the, uh, company that, uh, was leasing the building, uh, Something Bruin, uh, has decided that they are actually going out of business. Um, and, um, so they're leaving on the end of, uh, February, and the lease one's out. And just so you know, that they have paid, you know, through the end of January up to this point, so they have, uh, kept their, um, responsibilities and their obligations, and we appreciate that. Um, so, here we are. What do we do next? And, um, I think, um, what I'd like to start with is the renovations required. Um, there was supposedly, um, when the, uh, the lease was signed many years ago, that the monies associated with that lease were going to be used for improvements in the building. Um, that didn't happen. And, um, in fairness, one of the things of why it didn't happen, because there's been a lot of things that had to be done and improved in that building and just this past year, you know, the thousand dollar a month lease, um, we had, uh, 400,000, 400,000, poof, $4,000 worth of electrical work, you know, that had to be done, you know, in the building. So, um, based upon, you know, what we're getting and so forth is, is another discussion we'll talk about in a minute. So, um, there's no question that, uh, we have to put a handicap ramp on that building, okay? Whether it gets leased out or whether we use the building or not, it, it may be a requirement. And, you know, that alone is probably 20 to 30,000 dollars, you know, to do that. The other thing that needs to be done is, I'm sure that we've all had the opportunity to use the bathroom in there and, you know, you better stand sideways if you really want to use it. Believe it or not, that old library with all the kids, they used to love that place. Um, but anyways, um, so we have to put a handicap bathroom in there. So, that's another, you know, significant, you know, amount of money. And then there's other improvements that should be done with the building. They don't necessarily have to be done at all, all at once, but they should be. The windows are a problem and I'm, if you had a chance, I know Leah did, I don't know if Brian had a chance to, I know you've seen it before, but, um, so that's an issue, you know, as well. Um, then, um, you know, there's some, there's, there's a number of other cosmetic changes that should be addressed that, should have been addressed, you know, all along, and, um, so there's that. So does anybody have any questions on those proposed? Present, and, and I don't expect an, an answer of everything today. The next step, what we would do is that, we would take, you know, somebody like Nate and Tom Robinson to go over the building with, you know, with Teddy or whatever, to try to look at it, the whole building, and make a list of things and improvements that we need, so, uh, certainly not finalized at this point.
So, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, thanks, um, so. It needs a really good clean out, I mean, there still is some equipment there from the, the tenant. But, you know, it does really need a good clean out in some other places, which, you know, we, we can do that. Um, but I have to say that, you know, part of the storage area downstairs, the basement area, is, is in really nice, organized, you know, has some files and some things down there, and I, I think that's really in nice condition. I mean, I don't know who some of the furniture belongs to, there's a really nice big table down there that I, I can imagine must have belonged to the library. It's a great table to look at plans on, it's a nice big table, so, y- you know, um, I think once it's cleaned out, we may be able to see more, more positives, um, in it, but that, the handicap bathroom is not a small undertaking, like, you know, Mr. Chair said, the bathroom is literally like barely six square feet. I mean, it's tiny, uh, you would have to build it out into part of the actual library area, so that's not an easy, easy task, so.
Well, I mean, the whole building would have to be cleaned, cleaned out, or whatever, I mean, that, that'd be part of the process that we go through.
Right.
Yeah, Brian?
I was just gonna say, there is a lot of work, I will have a great conversation with, um, building commissioner today, and he's estimating, and given the fact that the building is right in the center of town, and we want it to look nice, no matter what we do, you're, you're probably looking at somewhere in the realm of eighty-plus thousand dollars just to do a ramp and an ADA compliant bathroom alone. It's a big chunk of change, especially where we're only getting a thousand dollars a month before. Um, I mean, part of me almost wishes we had the ADA self-assessment done, so we could try to go after funding that way. Um, that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year or so towards ADA projects, but we don't have that in place. Um, I don't know if we press the pause button and try to go after some funding through that route. Um, and, you know, if there are things that we can do that don't require making it, you know, public, publicly accessible with all the ADA requirements right now, we just hold on for a little while, see if we can get something done. Part of, you know, part of me would like to see it remain something that's kind of a center of the community, like Something Bruin was, but we also know the town has a lot of space issues, so I wanna do what's right for the town and make the best use of the space, but it's gonna be a more money than I think any of us anticipate to get into a functional state.
Um, I, I was, oops, I was anticipating that amount, Brian. I was thinking, I knew it was gonna cost that kind of money, but the problem, the problem that you have, you know, whether we keep it ourselves, okay, or we lease it out, these improvements gotta be done. I mean, it's not, it's not a question of pretending that we're gonna lease it out again, or we're gonna use the space, because it has to be handicap accessible, and what should have been done years ago. Um, but, so, that is definitely one issue, okay?
So, from looking at the money, though, I think, you know, a thousand dollars is not really, I, I don't know what the square footage is, so I can't work out the square footage and everything. I, you know, with compared to what retail space is going nowadays. But I, I, you know, from a business point of view, if, if it's another coffee shop, it doesn't have a drive-through, I mean, I, I don't know how someone comes in, and, you know, if we charge a more current rent, I don't know how they can, I, I don't know how they generate a lot of revenue, because it really can't be a restaurant, let's say, that we don't have the facility for that, you know? So I, I don't know what your possible use could be that would generate enough money for someone to pay the rent, pay the utilities, and make a profit, you know?
Leah, the numbers I was given, if it helps, was that the, the main floor, where the business was, is somewhere around fifteen hundred square feet. And, but, the lease was written such that the business was only supposed to use that floor. However, they also ended up putting a bunch of stuff for storage in the basement, so the actual dollar per square foot was even less, because they were getting probably two-thirds more space than they should have.
Right, so.
So, uh, but just to follow up on that, the renovation piece, um, there, there's no way that could, that can be a restaurant, okay, without major, major modifications, and the historical commission isn't gonna allow us to do those type of renovations, from putting in vents and all that stuff, you know, they wanna keep the integrity of the outside of the building, you know, the way it is. So, from a restaurant perspective, you know, that can't happen, um, it could happen, but not without a lot of money. So, if you look at the space now, you're talking about, let's say, fourteen hundred feet, fifteen hundred, thank you, Brian. Um, we say to ourselves, okay, uh, we know we're hurting for space, okay? So, we look at it and we say, it doesn't make sense for us to rent it out as office space, or as a realtor, or something like that, when we need the space ourselves. Um, so for the cost of what we're talking about, you know, that would be good space. So I think, um, one of the decisions I think we have to say is, make, is that, um, there's plenty of office space around town, I mean, you know that all of the, um, all of the, uh, strip centers and so forth, that there's a lot of space, you know, in town, and there's another one going up, um, right there at the, uh, on Route eighteen, near the old A-frame building, which is, that's gonna be starting up as well. So, I mean, that's, you know, there is space, and I know that the old police station is, is office space, and, you know.
Corner of, uh, Rhode Island Road and eighteen, too, that other set of plans.
Oh, there you go, that's another one, so the question we have to ask ourselves is, is it makes sense for us to rent it out for anything except quote-unquote, a coffee shop, whatever that means? So I think that's the first decision that we have to make, because, you know, we are definitely hurting for space. And at the next meeting, uh, depending upon what we decide, what we're gonna do, is that I talked to both the fire chief and the, um, building inspectors, and you guys should have the same conversation when you get a chance. You know, uh, we talked about different options and multiple alternatives to try to come up with additional space for the town hall, and additional space for the fire department. Some of them are expensive, some of them are not so expensive. But if you took this space and we moved over inspectional services, you know, over there from the town, and, uh, we gave that space to the fire department, we got a short-term, a medium-term, and a long-term, you know, solution, then at least that would free up, you know, a substantial amount of space for the fire department, which is badly needed, you know, in that building. But, yeah, the next meeting, we're gonna talk about all these options and all these alternatives, and, you know, there's pros and cons to both, so, anyways.
Wouldn't, um, would, would we entertain charging the, um, the EDC with, kinda looking out to see if there's other options we aren't considering?
Other options for what?
Uh, potential uses of the building, and whether it's, you know, office, town office space, like you just laid out, or if there's some other busi, business opportunities we, three of us just haven't considered.
Um, I think the decision that needs to be made by the board is if we're gonna lease this out to somebody else for office space, or whatever it is, question is, why should we do that when we're hurting for space? That's the question, I don't care what business it is, you know?
Yeah, I still, I, I still have a, you know, just doing some math over here. You know, I still have a hard time seeing a business able to generate two thousand dollars a month just for rent, and then you add in utilities, and I, I think, you know, that, that, that's about what, you know, what some of the space is, and I, I, I don't know if I'm on the high or low, but, um.
And that's where I think the EDC maybe could help us, Leah, is do that research and figure out what a correct square footage cost should have been, given what the building has, has and does not have to offer.
Right, and that's just the, that's just the main level, that doesn't even include the downstairs, so, I mean, at a minimum, you know, you're looking at like a couple thousand dollars for rent, you're looking at, you know, six hundred dollars for electricity, you're looking at, you know, whatever, I mean, someone's gotta make three thousand dollars a month just to open the door. I, I don't know, I don't know how a coffee shop does that, or a school. I mean, the only thing that may, may be like a real estate office, but, you know, again, to Rich's point, if we, we're hurting for space at our own town hall, so, um.
Yeah, I mean, the, the thing is that we cannot give that space down in the basement up. There's no, no ifs, ands, or buts, I don't know if you've been down there, Brian, you know, with the file space and the file cabinets, we cannot give it, we got nowhere to put it.
Yeah, that's our only archive, really.
That's it, and if anything, we wanna expand that archive, you know, down in that space. Because, you know, we're, we're hurting for, you know, me, when they, when they decided to consolidate, you know, some of the people at the town hall, and, you know, Tracy can tell you, we're going through, trying to get the files straightened out, that was done, god, a, over a year ago, and we're saying to ourselves, oh my goodness, we don't have any space here for files and so forth, we don't even have any space for new employees, to put a new employee, you know, and the other one, you know, of course, is the, the, the conference room, you know, is, has become available, but, um, so there's many alternatives to talk about for us using that space ourselves. I mean, if you wanna have, you know, if you wanna reach out, I think you're on it, right, Brian?
Uh, Leah is listed as on it, am I, did I get moved on?
Am I?
I thought you were, but I could be wrong.
The committee was meeting, but I can, I can reach out.
The, the problem that we have is, is that, you know, we gotta make these decisions pretty soon. Because if we're going to go to town meeting and ask for some money, you know, for the renovations or whatever, we need to know what those are. And so, you know, I don't mind if we do something in the next couple of weeks, or something that, you know, uh, if they wanna look at it and say what it should be, or whatever. Um, the other option is to say, okay, you know, people are gonna say, ah, we want our coffee shop. All right, well, if you wanna send an RFP out for a coffee shop, you know, we can do that, but I'd be shocked. You know, if anybody comes back and says they're gonna pay the kind of rent that we're talking about, along with some leasehold improvements and so forth, because it would be a lot.
It's a tough time right now to expect that.
Right.
Right.
So, yeah, I, I do hope that people out there don't think that we're just looking to take away the one small town coffee shop we have, there is a legitimate space issue in town. Um, come take a tour of town hall if you have, well, I guess you can't right now, but.
Well, I mean. I mean, there's plenty, you know, I, I hate to say this, but, I mean, there's plenty of space around town, you know, that is empty, I mean, you got Sodell's, that's almost, you know, I mean, you got the fitness center there as well, I mean, you got, you mentioned the police station, you got the new place going on down at, uh, down there in the, uh, the old A-frame building. We got the one on seventy-nine coming in now, there's about three or four places, you know, that are available, you know, up on Main Street. You know, the reality is, is that retail's not doing well. And it'll continue not to do well, you know, just in general, we used to have small mump and pop, you know, retail stores and stuff like that. Um, it's not there anymore, right now, it's just not, and it hasn't been for a while. I know everybody says it's COVID-nineteen, but retail has not been there for a while, so. So whatever you guys wanna do, but I'd like to see if we can get this decision soon.
Okay.
Okay, who?
Okay, I will reach out to the Economic Development Committee, see if they have any ideas. And, um, I'll figure out, you know, how much the average, you know, retail space is, so we know what we're giving up for potential rent. I, like I said, though, I just, you know, we're limited on what we can do, so, you know, for someone to, like, put in a restaurant, so to speak, which can generate a little bit more, you can have a bigger, you know, menu. Um, I don't know how someone makes three thousand dollars just to open the door. You know, you haven't even paid yourself yet, you haven't even bought a, any equipment, you haven't bought a supply, you haven't, you know, I just.
And, and I'm not saying that they're gonna come back with a, a, a magic bullet that just makes sense, but that's why we have these committees, we're all super busy as it is, so let's lean on their talents, and they might come right back and say the exact same thing, makes total sense to use for town space.
So, are you, excuse me, are you gonna schedule a meeting with the Economic Development Committee?
Me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make sure, well, yeah, we'll figure out, I'll, I'll figure out if it's me or Brian that's on it, if it's me, I'll go ahead, I, if Brian says me, it probably is, and I'll, uh, you know.
The, the reason why I'm, I wanted to ask you whether they're gonna have a meeting or not, besides this, is that one of the things on my agenda that we talked about a couple of weeks ago is the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Yep.
So, one thing that, you know, having to do with this group, you know, we need to discuss a new charge with this group as to what our expectations are for them as a committee, is that's what's in the master plan, uh, implementation. So if you're gonna have a meeting, I think it would make sense to say, okay, you know, this is this thing, but we also, at some point, wanna talk about the Master Plan Implementation Committee, to get this thing moving, excuse me, because we need to do that, okay?
Yep.
All right, anybody?
I was just gonna say, like, a, a workback time for, um, EDC, so I know we're not there yet, it's coming right up, but if we're looking at doing a town meeting in, you know, early May, then that would mean we need to have ideas and figures much sooner to be able, you know, put it on the warrant and decide what we have to do.
Agreed.
You know, I'm gonna try to reach out right away and book a meeting right away for this, so.
Okay, anybody else got anything on that? Okay, good, um, next on the agenda is to, uh, vote, uh, to, to review and vote to approve the revised warrant for the town election, annual election of April fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Um, the reason why it's being done is because, um, one of the members of the park commission is not gonna be able to, uh, run again. So, uh, uh, fortunately, we were given notice early enough, so, uh, town clerk can, uh, um, revise that, so I'll entertain a motion to, um, approve the, uh, the new warrant as presented, um.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, before you guys vote, Brian had brought up a good point, um, Cisco's is one of the places listed for posting, which is now Fat Cousins.
I already told the town clerk, we're gonna put that on the annual town meeting.
Okay, so.
We have no choice, we, we don't, you know, has to be, has to be changed.
Okay, but it says Cisco's on the warrant.
Yeah, but because it hasn't been changed yet.
Right, so is that okay?
Well, I told Lillian, and Lillian said that, uh, she would take care of that, so.
Okay.
That's all I can tell you.
Okay, so.
And that's, this is, you know, I, I talked to her about it, because I knew, after we, uh, voted to open Fat Cousins there, um, I said this needs to be changed, and she agreed, so.
All right.
Just say it all.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the town warrant, um, as presented, which includes the addition of a one-year term for the park commission. And to be posted appropriately.
I'll second the question.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Maybe and I.
Yeah, I.
MRI, next on the agenda is to discuss the annual town meeting for May tenth, two thousand twenty-one, and open the warrant. Um, as the board members know, our annual town meeting is always ha, happens on the second Monday of May, according to the, uh, warrant, I mean, according to the bylaws. So, uh, entertain a motion to, uh, call, to call the annual town meeting for, uh, May tenth. Okay, uh, well, it's May tenth, uh, at seven PM, and open the, uh, warrant uh, of the annual town meeting, and.
So moved.
Wait, I'm not finished yet, sorry, and close the warrant as per the general bylaws on March eighth, two thousand twenty-one, at four PM.
So moved.
Second the motion?
Any discussion? All of them favor?
Maybe and I.
The dog is in favor.
Has a problem with that.
Have the camera eye, okay, next on the agenda is to discuss, uh, vote to the, uh, animal shelter contract for the town of Berkeley and, uh, Free Town. I'll entertain a motion to approve the, um, animal shelters for the, uh, contracts for the town of Berkeley and Free Town.
So moved.
Second the motion.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Maybe and I.
They are.
The camera eye. Next on the agenda is to discuss a request from the planning board to, uh, review the site plan for two seventy-one, uh, Bedford Street, uh, if the board has had a chance to, uh, review the plan. If there's any questions or any suggestions that we need to send to the planning board.
I reviewed it. Looked like a relatively simple change of the addition of a building will allow them to get a lot more of their materials inside. Um, had a quick discussion with the building commissioner to see if I was overlooking anything, and he, uh, did not point anything out, so I do not have any comments.
Okay.
I do not have any comments.
Okay, would you, um, send a letter to the planning board, uh, Tracy, and say that the water selectmen have no comments on the proposed plan?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is request from, uh, Kenneth Upham Senior to be reappointed as a constable. I entertain a motion to appoint, uh, Ken Upham, um, uh, as a constable for a term to expire on January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. The police chief, uh, reports no issues with the reappointment.
So moved.
Second the motion?
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Maybe and I.
They are.
My camera eye. Okay, next on the agenda is that, uh, to, um, to request from the Council on Aging and the Director to appoint members of the Council on Aging. I guess some of these positions have been available, uh, for a while, and I know they haven't had a chance to meet because of COVID nineteen. But, um, actually, we got a revised, uh, email from Kelly, um, that, um, to appoint, uh, four full members and one alter- alternate member. And, uh, the, the full members are, just make sure I got this right. So, you got that right? You got the right ones, uh, Leah, I just want to make sure I got it right, please.
Yeah, too. Um, so, uh, I make a motion that we appoint the following people to the vacancies on the Council on Aging Board. Donna Adams, Paula Frodoma, Devin Rees. So?
Um, okay, these are a little different because these terms are staggered. So, who needs to decide, who's going to be expiring on twenty twenty-one? Who's going to expire twenty twenty-two and who's going to expire twenty-three?
Oh, thanks, Tracy.
That's why I'm like, wait a minute, stop, um, so.
How many for each expiration date?
Yeah.
One. One for twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Okay.
We have one, two, three, three for twenty twenty-two.
Yep.
One for twenty twenty-three. Or wait a minute, that might wait a minute. No, that's the al-
Yeah, the alternate is for twenty-one.
We have three for twenty-two, one for twenty-one, and the alternate would also expire seven thirty-one twenty-one.
Okay. So you want to pick them?
I'll pick them. Um, lucky me. Um, so I make a motion that we appoint Brenda Carter to the alternate position to expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. I make a motion that we appoint, uh, Devin Rees Boyarjen. Uh, hold on. Let me just check one thing.
I'm just going to check Kelly's, uh, email here.
This won't limit, um, what Devin is already doing at the COA, right? She does a lot of great work over there.
Yeah.
That's, that's separate, that we, we, she gets paid to do that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so Devinny as a three-year.
It, it's not a three-year.
Twenty-one, no.
Twenty twenty-two.
So Devinny as a twenty twenty-two. Um, Paula Hool as a twenty twenty-two. And, uh, Paula Frodoma as a twenty twenty-two. And Donna Adams as a twenty twenty-one, July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so that's a motion. You want to second that motion, Brian?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Um, I'll, I, I will say that I've had a couple of really good talks with Kelly, Kelly, who's the director there, and, um, she, because the board is changing almost half its makeup, she's going to, she's pulled out of the archives the mission statement that was originally created back in whenever, um, seventy-six or something like that, and then there's been a couple of bylaw changes. This is a committee that is, um, governed by the bylaws. And she's going to, um, just, you know, make sure that everything their mission is, um, on point. It hasn't changed, so, um, it's a great opportunity to do this with, you know, the committees as they're changing, so, you know, Kelly's excited about this, and I'm excited too to see, you know, um, to see her, you know, doing that, checking and being sure that whatever the original mission, we write it together, and, um, and, and it's good. So anyway, so a lot of work going into this right now.
Okay, all those in favor?
Maybe and I.
They are.
Okay, I'm right. Okay, next on the agenda is to, um, schedule a board of, uh, selectmen's meetings for February and March. Um, so, uh, what's being proposed right now is, uh, February eighth, February twenty-third, March eighth, and March twenty-second. Do you want to make a motion to that?
Just double checking, because the twenty-third is Tuesday, if anybody didn't notice.
Oops, sorry.
That's all right.
Oh, that's because of, uh, yeah.
The holiday.
Is that the holiday or is it the fifteenth?
Leave the holiday is the twenty-second. Let me just check it again. I did.
I think it's the fifteenth.
Think so? I looked at our holiday schedule for the town.
According to my dot, it's President's Day on the fifteenth.
All right.
Um, so can I ask a question? We do have a meeting in two weeks, correct, on the twenty-fifth?
Just one second, Leah.
Yeah, it is February fifteenth, so we can make it twenty-second.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Leah.
Okay, so we have a meeting on the twenty-fifth of January, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so then the meeting after that will be.
The eighth.
The eighth.
Okay.
Twenty-second.
The twenty-second.
March eighth.
March eighth and.
March twenty-second.
Twenty-second. Um, yep, those work for me.
Yeah, same here.
Okay, well, that's good. I'm glad they all work for you.
They work for you.
The problem, no, it's fine with me. The problem is that we're going to have a number of meetings in between there. Everything to do with the budgets and so forth, so just so everybody knows what's, because, uh, you know, starting in February, you know, we're going to have to, you know, like we did last time, you know. I think we did it three nights in a row, whatever, but anyways, we'll get there when we get there, but. Okay, so entertain a motion for those, February eighth, February twenty-third, March eighth, March twenty-second.
So moved.
February twenty-third or second?
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Right? Okay, right?
I think you said twenty-third. I just want to double check.
No, I said twenty-second.
February twenty-second, March eight, March twenty-second, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
And I.
They are.
Okay, I, oh, God. Help us. Okay, next on the agenda is to approve the minutes of, uh, November twelfth, two thousand twenty, November twelfth, November sixteen, two thousand twenty, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty, November twenty-third, two thousand twenty, and December second, two thousand twenty. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second the motion?
Any discussion?
Thank you, Tracy.
No changes?
No.
Wow, no changes.
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Maybe and I.
They are.
Uh, the camera eye. Okay, next under, uh, new business, um, I just wanted the, uh, board to know that, um, uh, Mass DOT, um, thanks to, uh, Representative Norm Oral, uh, did a road safety audit of the intersection of Route eighteen and one oh five. Um, I did attend that meeting, and it was about twenty people involved. It was very good, and it was very informative, and, you know, they went through all the crash analysis and so forth and so on, and they agree uh, going left onto, uh, Route eighteen, you know, is a very, is a big concern. So, um, they had all kinds of videos. They had done videos and watching the traffic and watching people go through the lights. Um, so it was very, very good. So out of that meeting is a report that's going to be coming shortly. And out of that report, which I'll make sure the board gets a copy of, so you can make comments on that report of the short-term, medium, and long-term solution to addressing that problem at the intersection. Um, as I agree, that that intersection's got some problems and need to be addressed. So, uh, we'll see how it all goes, just so everybody knows.
Glad to hear it.
Yeah, and I think, actually, I think the, uh, if you want, I believe the videos are online. If you want to look at that, it was a three-hour meeting. But, uh, it's, it's up to you. It was painful at times, but it was good.
What was worse, that or the four-hour forty-three D meeting the other night?
Oh, God, tell me about it. Okay, uh, next at the agenda is, uh, next at the agenda, next, next new visit, new business item, as I had mentioned, um, we need to meet with the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And it's important because if we have to address funding, if we have to address, um, some bylaws or whatever, we need to at least get a consensus of, um, uh, what we need to do this fiscal year. Because, um, we really should have started that last year, but we didn't for some reason. Well, it might have been because of COVID nineteen, but anyways. So I'm proposing that we meet with them on the twenty-fifth of January, um, at seven thirty. So give us an hour before that to do our regular business. I just want to do a separate night.
That works for me.
Which date again was that?
That's our regular meeting on the twenty-fifth.
January.
The next one. Uh, just an hour beforehand, you said?
No, no, an hour. We, we'll meet with them at seven thirty.
Oh, okay.
We start at six thirty. We got our regular, hopefully, we get our regular business done by seven thirty.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so would you, uh, Tracy, ask the Master Plan Implementation Committee to meet with us on that day? Thank you. Okay, uh, as we all know, we're in, uh, budget season. Um, I'm, uh, in the process of, uh, which, of course, you'll have the chance to review them and, and get copies of them as well before we finalize them, but, so, um, I know that, um, Brian is working on the IT budget and, uh, Leah is working on the, uh, the animal shelter, animal control shelter, uh, budget as well, and I'm trying to finish up all the other budgets besides the department heads. I've been totally talking about the budgets having to do with the selectmen. Not talking about doing the budgets for all the other departments. They're doing their own. So I know that Todd has already got, you know, a number of them, number of them in. But one thing I wanted to discuss with the board, as you, um, as you know, last February, when we were talking the budget process and we're talking to the planning board, you know, um, there was discussion about a town planner. And, um, so that is still on the table as far as I'm concerned, and I think that we need at least a part-time planner, a shared part-time planner. If we don't use an employee, then we probably should have gone to, uh, consulting services or whatever. So my plan was, and this is still up for discussion, was that we would, um, we would eliminate the town coordinator's position. And then I'd replace that with a town planner, part-time town planner for fifty thousand dollars. You can comment on that now if you want, you can comment on it later.
Did we ever get a, a decision from the planning board on what they'd like to see?
No, but we'll continue with that process, but we got to do something. We, we can't wait any longer. Something's got to be addressed.
Also like to see, it might be premature, um, but are all of our fee structures in a place where some of that can be, you know, offloaded? Some of the salary basically be off with our fees, so that if it's something where they're doing a review of a project that's in place, you know, like we would with a peer review, i- is that a potential way to offset some of those costs?
It is, and, uh, Nate Darling and our building zoning enforcement officer has talked to uh, the chairman of the planning board to review all of his fees and so forth, and they haven't done that. Our fees need to be adjusted. You're absolutely correct.
Okay.
I think the chairman of the planning board agrees with that. So I know that will be, I'll know, we won't, but I mean, they'll be looking at that over the next month to be effective, you know, July first or whatever.
Okay, good to hear. Yeah, proof of thought. I'll think about that some more.
Okay, um, so as far as the budget is concerned, uh, from our perspective, um, other than that position, we don't have any proposed new employees at this time. Now, we did hire the part-time clerical and selectmen's office, and it's working out very, very well. So unless anybody has any other ideas right now.
Not position-wise. Um, I know we just renewed the contract for the IT services, but, um, I would certainly entertain, as we get into this process, any feedback from yourselves and how you feel that's going, because how's the service level going? How are you, how are you hearing from employees? And whether or not we want to potentially stick with that kind of service or bring positions back in-house, so I'm discussion for later, but just keep it in mind.
Yeah, okay, you want to talk it later. I mean, I think it's working out pretty well, actually.
Yeah, right now, I think it is.
Be going good, and we don't, I mean, we have problems, but you're always going to have problems. I mean, it's just the way, that's just the way it is, you know. But I think we'd be better off, you know, using an outside service, but we can talk about that, so. Do you need anything from, um, from Todd, you know, about, you know, you get it yourself, but I mean, the exact expenses and what's been, you know, paid year-to-date, especially with maintenance contracts and stuff?
So, uh, so far, big, big, huge thanks to both Todd and Lori Catalata. They've given me everything I've asked for extremely fast. Um, it has been a bit of digging going through the past couple of years to dig up contracts and, you know, what fees are, one-time fees versus recurring fees. Uh, so once I'm, one thing I would ask our department heads as they go through with respect to IT stuff, um, if they're looking to make any additional software purchases, service purchases, because it appears that all of the individual department software is rolled into this IT budget, so it's not reflected in the department budgets.
Yeah.
So when they're coming up with those things they want, let us know if there's a recurring fee, whether it's maintenance or a year-to-year fee for the license itself, so that we can factor that in, just in case it's not a one-time thing.
Yeah, there's one that I know of for sure, and that, if you remember the software we bought for the police department, which we, which was the, um, call stuff that gets logged and so forth and so on.
No.
We need, we need that, we need that second piece for the fire department, so that, that will be requested, requested by the fire chief.
Good. I had a good talk with him. He's, he did have two or three items he expected to add.
Yeah.
But yeah, I maybe I'll, maybe I'll write up a quick little note just to send everybody and just say, hey, as you're thinking about these things, it's not just that year one cost, what's coming after that as well.
Right, and I think that there's a lot of things in there, like you remember the, uh, the sixty-four thousand dollar contract that we paid for that, whatever it's called. You know, that's a three-year contract, you know, it's not a yearly thing, so.
Right.
Those are the type of things that, uh, you know, and, uh, from a technology standpoint, you know, um, I think there's ten thousand dollars in the budget for equipment and stuff, I, I would imagine that would be enough, but that would have to be discussed with, uh, Green Rivers and yourself, so.
Yeah, they, they did a big amount of hardware refresh in the last year or two. I don't anticipate a high amount of hardware turnover, but that is something that we need to look at.
Okay, the, the other thing I just remembered, uh, you had, uh, requested that the, uh, town accountant put together a quarterly financial report?
Yes.
And he's, he's done that.
Oh, great.
So the, uh, question is, do you want to, uh, uh, put that on the agenda to meet and, uh, to discuss that report, to have him come in and give a presentation?
I think that would be very helpful.
Okay, so, um, there we go. Uh, so we should invite the finance committee for that meeting too, because I know they wanted to participate, so we'll put that first on the agenda for, uh, January twenty-fifth.
That's good. Looking forward to it.
Yeah, Mr. Care, just remember, we only have an hour to do the, that meeting in.
Yeah, maybe we should move the, uh, yeah. Well, I don't know. Why don't we move the master plan? Well, I don't know, why don't we move the master plan implementation to eight o'clock then?
We could start at six.
Well, that's up to Brian, but.
Doesn't matter to me, six thirty's fine, we can move master plan to eight, doesn't matter.
Uh, six on the twenty-fifth I could do.
You want to do that? Okay.
The others can, sure.
That's fine with me. Okay, so we want to start a regular meeting at six o'clock and then have the master implementation committee at thirty? Is that what we want?
Yep, the town accountant and FinCom on at six.
Correct. Okay, okay, the, the next item, you know, having to do with capital plan, um, the, um, the new forms that were created by Todd. So everybody seems to be okay with it, they seem to be going, you know, pretty well. Um, so there's the equipment, you know, piece of it, you know, which all the department heads are doing their thing. As far as equipment is concerned, and, um, Nate is, uh, doing some having to do with the buildings, okay? Um, once again, this is anything over ten thousand dollars. So, um, and we just talked about one potential here, which is the, the old library. Is there anything else that the board, um, would like to include on the capital plan? Uh, that's not related to, um, equipment, doesn't mean you can't request something, I'm just saying that the department heads, I know that Brian, you had brought up some security issues maybe that we want, we want to address.
Yep.
So, uh, you can think about that, um, and is there anything else from a building side that we need to address?
Um, we may have some things that I, although I don't think that they're gonna come to the ten thousand dollar. Depends on how we do it, whatever, in the kitchen at Loon Pond Lodge, but, um, you know, that, that it may even be short-term, so.
Okay, um, all right, well, think about it, and if there's anything that you think or any suggestion, just send it to me and I'll, I'll fill out the form for you. Okay, and we'll, we'll add it to the capital plan. You can, you can do, you can do it yourselves if you want, I don't care, but, you know. Or, or email it to Todd and Todd will fill it out for you, you know, whatever. Okay, so I guess that's about it for that. Um, and just, just so you know, um, after all, everything that we spent, um, at the annual town meeting and the fall town meeting, we have a million seventy-one thousand dollars available in free cash use, just so you know. So, which is good, because then the free cash will be certified again on July first. All right? Anything else? No?
At the moment. Admittedly fading just a little bit.
Okay, well, I'm really gonna make you fade in a minute. Okay, um, let me discuss the Loon Pond Lodge agreement and the park commission's, uh, budget. And, uh,
You know, that.
Capital and maintenance plan, now, Brian, I'm not gonna make this take an hour, just not.
Who?
We've, we've talked way too much of this stuff. Um, but the first thing I want to make a note, my, uh, we, as the park commission voted, according to the contract, you know, the chargeback, uh, SEM, uh, that the bills that they submitted to us was twenty-three thousand two hundred. And, uh, they owe us a credit of thirteen thousand three hundred, so the net effect is they, um, um, we owe them, uh, whatever that difference is.
Can you say that again, Rich? I'm sorry. And does that include the thousand dollar credit that they were due?
That is correct, it does, yep. So the thousand dollar credit, and then they owe us eighty-one hundred and sixty dollars, uh, because they didn't make their numbers. And then the, uh, two percent difference versus the eighteen percent difference, they owe us, um, seventy-two hundred dollars. So, um, that's the difference less the, the invoices that are open. So Todd has drafted a letter to send to them to confirm this, if they're gonna dispute it, um, to let us know. Okay, the only thing I'd like to bring up about the, um, else is that, um, did we resolve the, uh, website, the Loon Lodge website, Loon Pond Lodge website?
I, geez, sorry, 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 sorry. I have not heard back from SEM on whether they found out if they have the renewed the host agreement, and I have not heard back from them on what they're doing with the domain name.
Okay, they, they can't use that domain name, so they should be aware of that, they can't use that, I mean, that's a town, town facility.
Yeah. They've made clear of everything, I just haven't heard back at all, I asked them to, um, figure out if, cause a lot of times the host stuff just automatically renews. So, um, uh, they were gonna look into their records to see if they've already paid for another three years of hosting the website. So I have not heard back from them yet.
Well, yeah, um, I'm sorry to interrupt, uh, looking at the domain information, that's where, it's just loonpondlodge.com?
Yeah.
Uh, the public information on that currently shows that it expires on January twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-three.
Now, excuse me, Brian. To renew that, Brian, we can do that ourselves, right?
Um, it looks like they've got it registered to themselves, so we would have to do some kind of domain ownership transfer.
Okay.
And then once we did, um, then we could take it over and yes, we'd be in charge of our own destiny there.
Okay, so can we find that out as soon as possible, so we know, you know?
Yep.
Cause the website is up and, uh, as you know, people are calling and people are sending emails, and I know they do now have the access to the email, and that's good, but uh, don't know why the park commission isn't doing that, but thank you very much, Leah, for, for doing that, but.
Okay, you have someone who's gonna be helping me, so.
I know, but still, okay, so the next big discussion, which is gonna take a few minutes, and I'm sorry, Brian. Okay, um, we, and I, and I disagree with this whole strategy, but that's okay, that's what they wanted to do. Because they didn't want to hire anybody to be, uh, an event manager. Uh, they insisted that we send it out to, um, to companies that, um, would be the event managers of the facility. So we've done that, okay? And, um, we've had, um, three, uh, very good, um, companies that are in the restaurant business, um, interested in doing this. And one of them has already responded, by the way, I don't know, um, I can forward it to you, uh, we just got it this afternoon. Um, and Leah will tell you, because actually she met with them, and I have talked to these people a few times. And they're saying to us, um, why are you doing this, you know? Just put it out to bid and say, okay, we're gonna move our caterer, we want to do the bartending service, we want to do the event manager and turn it over to one company. They said, there's no reason to do this event management, um, approach. So, um, we can save a lot of money by not doing it that way. So Leah, you want to put your two cents in and then we can discuss it further?
Sure, um, so, meeting with two of the folks on Friday was, you know, eye-opening in a lot of ways, someone had some historic knowledge of the way it was originally, um, you know, um, suggested to be done, um, so. I, I'm trying to do what's right here, I have spent so much time, and, and again, I don't mind putting the time in, but I, I'm trying to please, you know, a hundred people, it seems. And, and I don't know that that's possible. So we, we tried to get an event manager because we all decided that it probably wasn't a, uh, uh, wasn't the best move to make was not to hire an individual person to be an event manager for the town. Um, because, mostly because when the events actually take place, someone has to be able to stay with the event. Now, y- you know, during the winter time, that isn't a big deal, but during the big, you know, wedding months and everything else, you know, there could be five weddings on a, in one week, I mean, that's a lot of time for one person to, to spend there. So we decided through the park commissioners that we were going to do this event management. Now, I, I think right now we have an RFQ out for the event management, but, you know, the feedback we're getting is that it doesn't really make sense, so I'd like to bring up the suggestion that we rescind the, um, the RFQ, and we instead put out an RF. P, I'm not sure what it is, but, um, but again, go to bid to get one company to do all of it. Catering, bartending and, um, event management. Now, I know this goes a little bit, you know, the park commission is a little bit split on this. So, um, I think, you know, as a selectman, we're the ones that usually have to make the heavy decisions and sometimes not the popular ones, but I think that if we can find one company who's willing to do it all, who can provide a variety of menu, who can, um, who can just provide consistency and, and do it all for us. I, I think that's a better, you know, but right now we do have a RFQ out there that, or is just event management. The park commissioners, um, independently, two of them asked us if we could send out, you know, RFQs for priority vendors, caterers. I'm not sure what we do with them if we don't have anyone to run the event. So. Um, so that's why I think that we need to just get one company, we're gonna basically say to them, you know, uh, do your best, you need to keep in mind, this is our polling place, and I'm sure the contract is gonna be a thirty-page document. But I think that it would be much more successful if we have one company just do the whole thing, and we now know that there is interest in doing that, so that's where I'll stop.
Okay, um, so you know, we have had one company respond, we had one company said that they're interested in doing the whole thing, but they're not gonna respond to the event management, because they, they want, you know, control over what needs to be done and how it's gonna be managed. And, um, as I said, these three companies have an excellent, excellent, you know, reputation. They do this all the time, they do weddings, they hold events, and they have extensive, you know, um, menus. So.
Um.
That's, and, and, you know, just one more thing, Leah, and you know, I was very disappointed at the meeting with the park commission where, uh, one of the members said they hadn't seen the document that was being sent out, and that's not true. It was all sent out to all the members before our meeting on the twenty-eighth, on the twenty-second, for them to review it and make any comments. Didn't receive back any comments at all, and then he realized that, um, he was wrong. But, you know, so all of a sudden now they're saying, well, we want to do this. You know, two days later after our meeting, um, and I'm saying, wait a minute, what do you, what do you want to do? I mean, the two companies that they're talking about can't handle this, they just can't do this type of thing. They don't have the staffing and all the resources, you know, to do this, so the question becomes, what do we want to be, and I've said this a hundred times, and I've said this for a year. What do you want to do? And this is going on way, way too long, so, Brian?
Um, can I, let me just, before I.
Oh, sorry, Leah.
No, that's okay, I know I'll forget this. Um, the two companies that were there Friday, as much as they want to do all the business, they're professionals. And they said what's most important is, you know, the actual bookings we already have, and if someone has already chosen, um, a vendor, they will definitely work with that person, because what they're interested in is repeat business for themselves, for us. So even though we may give it to one, we may award it to one company, they will still work with the people who already have their, their events booked, if they've already picked their caterer and it's someone other than, you know, the company, so I, I just think that, and this came from two of the people, so I, they're both professionals. And we couldn't be asking for any more than, than that. Sorry, now, Brian, you can go.
No, I, I certainly want us to help put the park commission in a position where they can focus on making the parks the best it can be, whatever that is, and that's their vision. Um, I think having a strong event management company in there to take this over would be fantastic. I think it also makes sense that it's, you know, the same company handling all the alcohol, um, and everything that comes with that. I don't know how we do the licensing yet, but I think, I think those should be the same company, because you always want to know that you're not, you know, looking for a bartending service for every event that there is. Um, beyond that, if they are a company that has their own, uh, catering options, great. Um, there is part of me that would still like to see them not only, um, uh, not only respect the choices that have already been made for everybody with events coming up this year, next year, whatever it might be, but you know, have that option, whether it's, you know, outside vendor, that, you know, the person holding the event just really, really wants that particular food truck to come that day. Um, you know, maybe there's something they really want off of it, like have that as an option that the event management company can handle, um, and not just close the door to that. Like, that's really important to a lot of people, you know, some of these smaller businesses in town. Um, I want it to be, you know, smooth as you guys do too, I want to help move forward however we can, um, and take the parks' input on that, but at the end of the day, I want them to be able to commission the parks and make the parks amazing and turn this around and get the money coming back in. Um, from the, Leah, from the, the walkarounds you guys did the other day, did either of the companies that were there, I mean, are they as eager to jump on in the middle of the pandemic? I mean, how does that affect anything, if, if at all, right now? I mean, are they still looking to hop in?
Um, yeah, because they're not, they're not looking to book functions in the next three to four to five months, they're looking at this as a three-year contract potential. Um, and, you know, and, and one person did say, I'm really not interested in just doing the event management. This is, for me, this is worth my while if I can do the whole, you know, the whole thing. Um, so, hearing that from the source and to your point that you just made, again, the people that we're talking about, they're not, you know, we didn't, we didn't sort of pit different sized companies, we put, we picked like-sized companies, like, you know, the geography is similar. Um, but, you know, two out of the three people were there Friday and they said, if, if someone wants something, you know, like a food truck or something, you know, that's not our specialty, where, where we would contract that out. I mean, they're professionals, they're not saying, oh, my feelings are gonna be hurt. I mean, these are things that they said to me, it wasn't, you know, I, my biggest concern to them was that I want the functions that are already booked not to have an interruption in service, um, and they were absolutely on board with that, so I, I think any of the three companies that we put it out to, I think would be really in a good situation, you know, to, to, to have any one of them, so, um, I just think that if we can get consistency, I think the parks won't have to worry about who's emptying the trash and, you know, all that other, all that other stuff that goes along with it. And I, I gotta tell you that, you know, they, they commended, you know, the folks who put the building together when it was renovated, and they all said, you know, some of the work in here, some of the equipment in the kitchen needs to be just like that final hookup. But they said there's some nice pieces of equipment in that kitchen, and they'd be more than happy to be working in the, in a nice kitchen like that, so. You know, a lot of good to be said for, you know, the work that the commissioners did when they built, when they renovated the building, so.
I, I think whatever we do going forward, maybe this is premature to say, but, you know, I, I would like to see whatever relationship we come up with between the parks and ourselves and whomever, whatever company might be, to somewhat be performance-based, because that's, to me, you, you want them to have that drive to, to do great, to get events in there that are gonna generate funds for the parks and such. to get events in there that are going to generate funds for the parks and such. Um, I, I really don't want to see it just be flat fee, you know, they're going to get it every month regardless if there's one event or 10, like really make it something that, you know, they're going to want to work for. Um, and go from there. Um.
You, you were copied on that one proposal, Brian?
I did. I got the one.
And if you, if you read it, you can see, you know, what they, what they want to do.
Yeah, it was very detailed.
Pretty, very extensive.
Yep.
Um, and they also said, you know, I know the park commission said, well, somebody's going to have a pig roast. They said, no problem. We know who that company is. We'll just subcontract with that company, you know, to do a pig roast because they can't do a pig roast. So, I mean, they're willing to be flexible enough to try to accommodate them. But if they have a similar product, you know, that they want to sell and they can match that product, then they should be able to get that business and that's how they feel. And I don't blame them.
I don't either. You know, but I like, I like the idea of the door being open at least. So whether it's a pig roast or something else, a clam boil, whatever it might be, um, the idea that they're open to saying, we don't have that expertise. Let's go find the right person. That's good.
Right. Okay. So we, do we want to continue on or do we want to pull this at this point?
Sorry, the dog's barking in the background. Um, he's, uh, calling me to dinner. Um, I think, um,
A little late for that.
Yeah. Uh, not in a Greek house. Um, so I, I, uh, my, my suggestion would be to rescind the, the event management and then just put out a, a bid for everything. They, you know, the, the food, the event management and, um, you know, the, the bar, sort of, so to speak. Um, I know there's been some talk with the attorneys and talking about how we do the liquor license and, and again, for anyone who's still watching us, none of this stuff is, is easy. It's, it's quite complicated, but, um.
Yeah, I kind of leaned towards what you're saying there, Leah, because the, the, what was it? Request invitation, the quote? There's too many acronyms this past few years.
That was because it was under $50,000. This is going to be over $50,000. So it's a request proposal.
Well, like that's, that's a question I guess I have too, is like, if it's the right setup, it's almost like it's a money maker, not a money spender. Like what, what procurement path does that fall under? But, um, I do feel probably putting it out again, even if we get the same people back, might be the right thing to do, given that the scope of services would be different.
Right. And I don't know that we could accept the one proposal that we've gotten because it's not exactly, but, you know, I, I just, again, I always just want to do everything correctly. So, um.
Yeah. So the, the question becomes, okay, this is what the board wants to do and the board signs these contracts. And so the park commission has got to, uh, realize, you know, what we're going to do and we're trying to do it right and we're trying to make it easy and we're trying to make sure that it's done correctly. Um, so I, I don't know what to say. I wanted to do this a year ago, you know? I said, this is the way we got to do it. And, uh, I, I got pushed back and I said, okay, we'll do it your way. And that, that's where we are right now. But after I think, you know, Leah just said, you know, my discussions with these people and Leah meeting with them and, and saying, you know, guys, you're taking the wrong approach here, you know, just turn it over to one of us that wins the bid. And then we'll move forward. And, uh, that's where, kind of where we are, but we got to get going on this thing, you know, we can't wait another month.
No, because right now there's a lull in activity. I mean, bookings are starting again, you know, I don't think the two in March, we have to look at them more closely. Um, and some of what we're getting via email is folks who want to take a look at it, um, to book their event into 2022. Um, there's three people who want to book for September 2021. I, I don't even know if that's, you know, going to happen.
I don't think there's space available, but anyways, you know.
Yeah, but, but I'm just saying, you know, we're, we're talking about COVID still and, you know, so we do, we do need to put this to rest pretty quickly. So. Uh, I mean, I can make a motion to rescind the RFQ that's out there and then we put out a new bid for some, one company to do everything. Again, that's probably not the popular decision with, you know, some of the park commissioners, but I'm looking for consistency.
Really make that a, um, if it's a multi-year contract, you know, one year at a time with extensions with some kind of review and performance metrics they have to.
Yeah, I mean, even in the, even in the first, uh, so even in the first draft of the, you know, contract that they had done, um, there was performance, um, markers in there. So we would definitely, you know, do that too.
So I did talk to Mark Rich, uh, town council, who handles the procurement for, uh, for KB Law. And, you know, he was involved in these, um, contracts, you know, before. And so I told him, you know, what we were trying to do and he said that that's fine. And that he, he would work with us to get something together. Um, uh, because you, you have to, when you go out to bid, in this particular case, you got to make sure not only is it the financial piece, but can these people do the job? I mean, you don't just don't want to pick somebody, somebody wins the bid and says, you know, I got the lowest bid, I'm going to win the job. No, you got to make sure the criteria is very well spelled out about the expertise of the size of the, size of the firm and what they've done and so forth and so on. So that all would have to be outlined, you know, in this RFP. If that's what we do.
And if we do that, Rich, I kind of have to rely on you because I'm answering emails.
Well, I, I don't, I don't have a problem, you know, doing it, but I, I just don't need the, I don't know how to say this nicely, you know?
Don't say it at all.
I mean, we, we're trying to do the thing right here and it's just like, every time we turn around, there seems to be another roadblock. And so if we decide to do this, we're just going to go ahead and do it, you know?
Well, I mean, I think we should, you know, rescind the RFQ that's out there for event management because the response we're getting is no one really wants to just do e- event management.
Finally, what's the process there? Is that a vote or is that just that we don't award? I'm, I'm looking at our Maybelline commercial hair in the wind procurement.
A heater, it's called in my house.
Now, we have to, uh, rescind it. We have to make a motion.
So I'll make a motion that we rescind the RFQ and of course notify, you know, um, the, the three folks that it was sent to. Let's do that first.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Maybe and I.
Okay, I.
Uh, the camera, I. So, um, I will call the individual companies, uh, unless you want to leave. I mean, I'll call them and tell them that, what the situation is that we heard you loud and clear and, uh, we're going to revisit this with a different approach. Um, and, uh, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to get something out. So.
Okay.
Maybe we'll even see more responses with a expanded scope. So.
It's, it's possible. Yeah. Well, the, when we do this one, this is going out to the world. So, you know, so God knows we're going to get responses, but you know, so we'll see what, because we have to unfortunately. I wish we could just interview, you know, the people and just say, oh, this is who we want, you know? Unfortunately we can't. But what we can do as part of the process that we can interview the people that, you know, have responded, uh, in an open meeting to talk about what they do and so forth. So we can do that. So.
Okay.
So add that meeting to your, uh, to your calendar.
Not on the 25th.
All right.
All right.
Now, we, we all voted, right? I don't.
Voted, yep.
Thanks, sir.
Um, anybody else that want to bring anything up?
No, are we going to hit park commission budget or are we done with that with this discussion or?
Can we not?
You know, um, once again, you know, I think we tried to talk about some good things, you know, that we want to try to do, you know, but the problem is that we need to know. And let's take the Clear Pond, you know, as an example. We, we talked about this last February during the budget process. Let's put together, you know, different alternatives to try to address, you know, some of the issues, you know, having to do with Clear Pond. So you need numbers to look at it, to see what the options are. You need to know, you know, what you're going to charge, you know, and so forth and so on. And I, um, I, I know they haven't discussed any of that. And so, I mean, tho- those type of things that need to be addressed. And I know that, you know, Franklin and Nate, Franklin, the highway, the DPW director and Nate, the, uh, building inspector, we're, we're trying to help them and manage them, you know, and I know that at times they get frustrated because, you know, just do your thing, you know, and the list of things that they have put together that I forwarded to the, all the board members, those are maintenance items. Those aren't capital items. I mean, this is just a list of maintenance items and, and, uh, Frank is working on, on most of those and, you know, it's going to take time because there's a lot of cleanup, especially that needs to be done, you know, down a clear pond that hasn't been done in years. In fact, I, I think I sent an email that said that, you know, um, highway department sent three days down there a week ago. And they cleaning up all the, the trees and the branches and taking out stumps. They took out five dump loads, truck dump loads worth of stuff. You could just say, tell you, you know, that, that's a serious problem. But, you know, we got to communicate better and we have tried to communicate with them as best we can. And so, uh, you know, the budgets are due on the 18th. Um, and I'm sure we're not going to get their budget, you know? But those discussions have already happened. The planning should already have happened. You know, about, you know, the revenues, about, you know, the maintenance, about the capital items and stuff like that. And so I don't know, it's a little frustrating.
I, I do have, you know, um, sympathy for what, you know, the parks is going through with not knowing, you know, when they can, their biggest fundraiser is, you know, fund money maker is Loon Pond Lodge. So, um, you know, I, I can, I can respect the difficulty there, you know, not, not being able to estimate, you know?
I think that's, I think that's the easiest one. If we get somebody in place, you know, we use the same projected numbers that we used last year, assuming that it's going to be open and whatever.
Right.
Um, that's, that's the easy part, you know? But the other part is, you know, some of the charges and, you know, we talked about some of the things that need to be addressed and, and, um, so forth. And I, I just don't know where to go. I'm just trying to.
I mean, maybe this isn't a discussion for tonight. Maybe it's during the budget, um, meetings themselves. And I'd love to hear more later on where options really are. But I mean, does the parks, now that we've moved some of the maintenance items over to DPW and such, and, and we've got facilities, I mean, I would like to see us consider, unless it's too big of a hit, moving a lot of these costs into those departments, just so that as residents, we know that the facilities at least are going to be kept up to date. They're not going to get into worse shape by disrepair due to an enterprise fund being depleted due to COVID or whatever it might be. I mean, I think there's a a minimum set of services, perhaps we should list out and say, this will always be taken care of, whatever that might be. And then focus on.
I, I agree with you too, Brian, because, you know, let's face it, the board of selectmen changes. And, you know, we're very, you know, pro trying to help the park commission. And as residents, we like seeing it look good. I mean, the next board of selectmen may not have that as an interest. So I really, that was the point I was trying to get across last week was, I'd really like to see some of this stuff put, you know, somewhere in writing so that, you know, we know that there's a minimum level that the town needs to sort of provide now. I, I've read a lot, but that's beyond right now what I know how to do. So I'm open to anyone who has a suggestion.
All, all of the, um, all of the maintenance items, quote unquote, maintenance items, you know, fixing a toilet, you know, doing electrical work, that's already coming out of the town side of the budget.
Right.
Everything. So, you know, the big items is a different item, you know, that's a capital item, you know? You know, the, the famous haunted house. That's a huge, that's a huge expense that needs to be done. But that's a capital item. That's not a maintenance item. But all the items associated with that, I mean, the town's been doing that for the last two years. And then as far as, you know, um, Frank is concerned, you know, he's, he's complaining that he's taken a lot of that stuff out of his own budget. You know, having to do with, uh, things that they need to buy and so forth and so on. They should not have an equipment budget, you know, over there. And that equipment budget should be part of the highway department. Because he's responsible to maintain all those facilities, to buy any equipment and stuff, they shouldn't be doing that out on their own. And, and that's, that's been a problem because he has most of that equipment in the highway department that he can use, less since buying, you know, extra ones if you already have it. Um, so I mean, there's that, there's that piece of it. Um, and we already said we'd try to address, you know, some of the capital items within reason. I mean, we can't go ahead and, you know, put a half a million dollars on that place overnight, but we certainly, you know, can address things like the haunted house and maybe the building down, you know, the background of the building down at John Pond and, you know, uh, Clear Pond is a problem, you know, there's a lot of work that needs to be done there, a lot of stuff that needs to be torn up and thrown away, quite frankly, because it's no good. It's no, it's no good. It's dangerous. But.
I think Clear Pond's a great example of like, is that a maintenance issue? Is it an ongoing capital investment where Lakeville residents would love it to always be available. And this here's really stunk because we couldn't do that for them for obvious reasons. And, you know, what is the investment necessary to say, yeah, we got your back. So that when this kind of thing does happen, we're not relying on an enterprise fund. And, and maybe, maybe the reallocation with DPW is going to get us there. Uh, but that's the kind of thinking I would like to see us continue going forward with.
We're trying, Brian.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Well, with any luck, you know, when hopefully we'll be able to open Clear Pond this summer. And you know what? I think when folks go there, they're going to see a huge difference. I mean, I, it was funny because I had gone there just before the five dump truck fulls came out and I, and I went back and I was like, wow. You know, so it looks good. It looks really good. And you know what? We can't expect the park, you know, with one part-time maintenance person to get that kind of work done. You know, I mean, that's what you, it requires highway department to do that level of work, you know, so.
And we're doing it. We're doing it.
We are doing it. Right, right. So, um, anyways.
Do we know if, um, is, is Frank looking for any new heads to keep up with any of that work or does he think he's in a good spot now? Or do we not know?
We, we have one more open position, you know, that's, uh, we need, uh, that was funded as part of the, uh, you know, using them at, uh, the park commission, a full-time person.
Can't get anybody, right?
Right now, we can't get anybody to apply. Nobody wants to apply. And so, you know, knowing Frank, as we all know Frank, he is very particular, you know, on who he hires, the experience that they hire, you know, this person. So he doesn't want to hire everybody. He's got to let go in a few months. It's a, you're going to do a very good job. That's not Frank, you know? But, you know, the other issue having to do with, uh, Clear Pond, and that's why we need to do this analysis of Clear Pond. I mean, they have 14, I mean, I like kids. They have 14 kids, you know, down a Clear Pond, doing what during the summertime, you know? Whereas if you had two people, seasonal people working for Frank, he would make sure that every day you do this, you do this and you do this. And so that needs to be addressed because if he, he says, if he's, if he's taking the responsibility of maintaining Clear Pond, he wants the resources to report to him. And I don't blame him. I don't blame him at all. So I mean, that, that's an issue that's going, that's going to come up, you know, and then he didn't bring it up, you know, the, uh, last week because he said, oh, I'm trying to put this proposal together. But, you know, he has the resources and this time of the year, especially with no snow on the ground, you know, he can use, he can use his people. He can use, uh-oh, I'm running out. So I'm going to plug in my laptop here.
Uh-oh. Or we could make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, we could do that.
Oh, sure. You're just trying to get rid of me. All right, all right. So, um, anyways, um, but, you know, these things have got to be addressed right away. We can't wait months and say, oh, now what are we going to do? You know, and that's the problem. And that's why I keep bringing it up. And believe me, nobody loves our parks more than I do. I, when Ted Williams was bought, $2.3 million, man, was at a fight. And I was standing up right then and there. One of the finance committees said, we've got to do this. This is for the town of Lakeville. But and all my kids and Leah's kids and whatever, and then your son, one of these days will be playing baseball too, I hope. and all my kids and Leah's kids and whatever, and then your son, one of these days, will be playing baseball too, I hope.
See, we're gonna make sure it's still there.
Exactly.
I mean, some of us just deteriorated. And I think that you look at what Frank's done in the last year of maintaining the Ted Williams camp. He's done an amazing job.
Yeah, people have, you know, people have commented to me. I've gotten messages on Facebook and texts and, you know.
Anyways, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay, don't move.
Second the motion.
Hold us in favor.
Maybe an eye.
Day, eye.
Well, thank you very, thank you very much.
Have a good night.